Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, meeting of the Norwood Board of Selectmen. The meeting is being held in the Harry Butters Selectmen's Chamber at Norwood Town Hall and also broadcast on NCM. As always, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, it's great to see everybody, and we weathered the storm okay. First up, we've got a few agenda items, then we've got some special visitors. Excellent, we'll get right into it. Item number one, warrant signature update submitting notification of reviewed and approved warrant reports signed by the board's representative. Pleasure of the board.
Move to accept.
Motion to accept made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor? Chair votes are unanimous. Item number two, meeting minutes for approval of the board submitting meeting minutes for January 23rd, 2024. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Ms. Gross, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor? Chair votes are unanimous. Great, that brings us to our first appointment, and we have Chief William Brooks from the Norwood Police Department and Chief Tim Bailey from the Norwood Fire Department. Welcome, thank you so much for being here. We're gonna have you go first, Chief Bailey.
Sure.
Okay.
So we finished out the year with 6,881 emergency calls. Since I met with you last time, we've had several fires, two second alarms, and one working fire. Operations-wise, we're working on First Do, which is our reporting software for how we report ENFRS, which is the National Fire Incident Reporting System. That is a new system for us, it's part of the ATRAC acquisition, and we're in the process of implementing that, and that'll be going into place on March 1st. There's multiple sections to that, we're going in with the ENFRS portion first, and then we'll do some of the other modules as time goes on with that. Lieutenant Shockley has been instrumental in building that program out for us when he can. Lexicole is our department policies and procedures, and that is a program that we got a vote a year ago. Deputy Cody's been working on that, and that is moving along very well as well. Also, in the area of fire prevention, we're working on all the major projects here in town, we work hand-in-hand with all the departments that are involved, especially the building commissioner and his crew. That, again, is spearheaded by Deputy Cody and the fire prevention team. We've had two members that have retired since we last met. Deputy Dan Harkins retired after 34 years, firefighter, EMT, paramedic, Brian Donoghue also retired. We have two members in the fire academy currently at the Stowe campus, they'll be graduating on March 29th. We have one who is in the Bridgewater campus, and he'll be graduating on April 12th. Apparatus, both of the new ambulances are in, they were in service for a short time, we had some issues with them, so they're both being back at the shop, working, being worked on for warranty items, and we hope to have those back soon. We're okay as far as running the ambulances, because we kept the other two ambulances, we didn't lose anything when we got the new ones in, so we're in good shape there. The new engine, which has been about two years now, that is, has arrived in North Adamo at Greenwood, and that'll be in service hopefully the first or second week in March. That's being outfitted right now. As far as the station goes, we have the HBAC project, which is ongoing, that's going very well, they've been there for about three weeks now, and they're doing that on the upper floor right now, and then they'll be moving down below. Allcom is also in the station at this time, and what that is, is it's the other portion of the buildup for, with ATRAC, for the grant money that we received, that's all new speakers and monitors and radio equipment, and it's quite involved, they're running wire right now, and that's going extremely well, and hopefully that'll be done by late spring, early summer, is what we're hoping for.
Chief, what's the life cycle on that type of equipment generally?
It should last for a long time, once it's put in. We're still operating on the stuff that was put in there originally, which was 20 years ago, so barring any, you know, major malfunctions, it should last for a long time.
So it was just time to replace it, it wasn't anything that...
So it was all part of the grant, and what it is, is the technology has changed in 20 years, so we'll be getting, there's 38 screen boards going into the station, which will actually show where the calls are, where the runs are, give them other specific information that they would need on a particular call. So it's all, it's all good stuff, it's just new technology.
Yeah, that's great.
I've been working with facilities, we're repurposing a couple of areas within the station to build them out and use them in a different fashion, one being the old dispatch area downstairs, we're repurposing that to the fire prevention division, we're gonna put them downstairs so they're more accessible to the public that comes in to deal with the fire prevention issues, so that's ongoing. The modifications that we're doing are very minor in nature, and Facilities has been excellent in helping us out with that. We're also modifying one of the offices upstairs, it used to be the fire prevention office, and we're making that into, basically into two different offices, one which will serve as the second deputy, once we get back to that position, which will be a little bit based on testing. One of the other things that I'm working with on Facilities is just a, I'd like to try to get the gear off of the floor, so the firefighting gear really shouldn't be where it is, in a new station it wouldn't be, so I'm exploring different avenues of potentially moving that and building another annex off of the side of the station for the gear that's temperature-controlled, gets it out of the sunlight, gets it out of the diesel exhaust, and basically gets it, makes more room off of the floor, so it's something that I'm looking at right now with them, and it's in discussion phase only, and we'll see where it goes from there.
Yeah, for something like that, how much space would you need?
So it would have to be big enough to fit all the gear that we have, which is roughly 60 sets.
Okay, it's pretty big.
60 sets of turnup gear. But I have a spot in mind, and I think it has the potential to work, we'll see how it plays out.
Excellent.
We completed the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services audit, that took us about, from when I got here till just after the first of the year. That was very extensive, it took a lot of man-hours. Lieutenant Chisholm was instrumental in helping us with that, he's our EMS coordinator, as well as my staff, Anne was also very instrumental in that. We also had to utilize several other town departments, it was information that was needed from multiple areas of town for this audit, and that's all been sent off, and all we received from it was "thank you" in the federal report, so we're not really sure where it's gonna go from there. And lastly, we received a grant last week for $24,973 from the state, it's a fire safety equipment grant, Captain Maun and firefighter Maloney helped to write that grant. The two items that we're getting from that is an accountability board, what that is, is a, basically it's a table that sets up so that we can track our incidents and track where our people are at major incidents, so that was one of the items that we've gotten from this grant. And the other one was for tactical PPE, which is personal protective equipment, and that'll be for the remainder of the grant, so, and that's to meet the requirements of the ASHER program, which is active, uh, let's see, I'm sorry, Active Shooter Hostile Event Response Training Program, so it's basically tactical gear for us, just so that we are protected, given if we...
Hope you never have to use it, right?
Hopefully we never have to use it.
Great, well, thank you so much, it sounds like there's a lot of good stuff, a lot of teamwork, a lot of cohesiveness, that's excellent to hear, so I'll just open it up to the board for any questions or comments, but thank you for being here. Mr. Sad.
Great job, chief, everything's in good hands, I thank you, happy Valentine's Day week, don't forget tomorrow. Thank you.
Ms. Grow.
And also likewise, I've been seeing your team doing a lot of good work out there, you're keeping people updated on what they've been up to, and just really happy to hear all the progress on grants and improvements around the station, so just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Ms. Plasko.
Thank you, chief, the graduates from the academy?
Yes.
They, what's the word, I want, kind of in training, were they anticipated to fill replacements, or were they already filling previous replacements and were gonna have some vacancies?
They were anticipated to fill, so...
So they should have minimum, if any, downtime?
That's correct.
Good, great.
And I actually have two others that are in the pipeline right now, that we have those covered as well, so we should be in pretty good shape.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Donnelly.
Good afternoon, good morning, good afternoon, good evening, chief, morning, sorry about that. So congratulations to Dan Hawkins and Brian Donoghue for their retirements. Have they, they've already retired?
Yes, they have.
So, and Dan's position was deputy chief, are we going forward with the posting process to promote a new deputy, hiring a deputy?
So we will be doing that, I'm bound to have a test for that, and that test is not given again until November, so there's some time for that.
Good, good. And I know compliments to the Fire Service Fire Department for the, both just recently and several months ago, dealing with incidents that were at a food production facility down on University Avenue. Great work, I'm kinda hopeful that it's, that that particular facility, and it's not an issue for the Fire Service, but I'm just kinda hopeful that we're able to communicate any concerns, safety fire-wise, with the, with the facilities, to make sure that we minimize such incidents in the future.
Right, so we are in discussions with them to make modifications and improvements to their facility, because we have had incidents there, and I think we're on the right path to do that, and we'll keep you informed of this stuff.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Chief Bailey. Mr. Resuf, anything to add?
No, sir. I get to talk to the chief every day, so...
All right, I sympathize for you. Okay, Chief Brooks, thank you for being here, welcome.
It's nice to see you all. I think when I was here last month, I may have mentioned that Detective Paul Ryan had retired from the police department, I want to say with 29 years of service, I think I mentioned that. We're in the process of having police officers compete and to move into a protective position. The way we do that is we interview the candidates, we select the top three, each of the top three work a temporary DUI, so they work an eight-week cycle in the squad, working cases, and at the end, we take recommendations from the detective sergeant and lieutenant of investigations as to which of the three would make the best detective, so there's a timeline to that process, but the people who are competing are in the squad catching cases, so the squad's not hurt by that. And of course, Officer Jamie Mahoney has retired after 23 and a half years of service, I think I may have mentioned that last time, but what we've done in the meantime is we've replaced him with Officer John Rooney, who was the new school resource officer at Norwood High School. And we did speak with, not only about him, but about his competition and so forth, you know, talking to the various principals and members of our school staff and so forth. Officer Rooney does a fabulous job, highly recommended, highly recommended by Dr. Gallagher at the high school, and he's, he'll fit right in, he's been standing in for Officer Mahoney anyway, recently. You know, Chief Bailey mentioned the dispatch operation at Holbrook, so a couple of things we're doing, just to let our staff have a better understanding of what Holbrook's really like, we see that coming along, and actually, you know, the more time that goes by, the smoother and smoother it gets, I've been pleased with what I've seen. Up until now, we've sent all of our sergeants over to Holbrook in four-hour blocks to watch the operation, meet the staff, see a little bit, it's different than the dispatch operation we used to have, because call takers and dispatches are separate people, and how calls are sent from call takers to dispatch, we now have real time on our phones, we can see real-time dispatching on our phones, which is helpful, so we've sent all the sergeants over. Now we're cycling over patrol officers, depending on staffing, where we are on a given day of evening, we take an officer off the road, send them to Holbrook for a one or two-hour block, let them meet the staff, see what's going on, see how it operates, and then come back. And that's been enormously helpful, I think, in getting the staff at Holbrook to meet our people, all they know, all they know the masses, voices, and all we know the dispatches are is voices, it's like working in a city where it's the voice of dispatch, but you actually never met the person, so we've been doing that, and I think it's been helpful, and all positive, all positive results from the officers coming back. Crime-wise, you know, and I've said to the general manager before, you know, that people don't break into places like they used to, we don't have house breaks like we used to, at least not, not to that extent, but we've had a couple of commercial breaks in the center of town, one was, and I still call it the News and Book, I should know the new name, Mr. Plasko, would you please know, I spent a lot of time at the News and Book back in the day, but anyway, they broke into the News and Book through the back, in the middle of the night, setting off an alarm, and came in, stole the cash register, a small amount of cash. Officer Sean Jennings, who was working at one of these DUI slots in detectives, caught the case, did a magnificent job, I don't wanna get into all the details to how he used technology and cameras, but he actually tracked, he actually tracked these people to Falmouth, and has obtained an arrest warrant for one of the subjects, we executed a search warrants in Falmouth, we seized a vehicle during the investigation, who we believe to be the vehicle involved, he really did a fabulous job. Interestingly, the gentleman who's across the street, had remarkable cleanouts, I was in, I happened to be talking to him, he said, I saw a lot of activity across the street, you know, I know there was a break-in, they get a lot of stuff, I said, they actually stole his cash register. He said, he can't operate without a cash register, I think I got one. True story. Hands it to one of his guys, and says, listen, tell him go across the street, no charge, this is him, so we can operate, and the guy plugs it in, and he operates his shot...
Oh, that's great.
...with a loner from Remarkable Cleanouts, so my hat's off to Mark, and Remarkable Cleanouts really... And when the new one came in, I think they turned it, you know, and said, we don't need it anymore, but they bailed him out for a week or so, so that was kinda nice. Anyway, that's a clear case, cleared that BNE. We also had a BNE at our vape shop in the center of town, and again, you know, commercial breaks are really down from what they were, back certainly when I was in the squad, we don't see as much of it, but there is a group working vape shops in eastern Massachusetts, and you may have seen it on the news, our detectives just last week executed a search warrant in Chelsea, and arrested a juvenile, we know there were about four or five involved in our break-in, not a lot is taken in these things, and they gotta divide it five or six ways, five or six ways, they really don't get it, but in any event, we have arrested a juvenile, the primary in that case is Detective Brendan Green, he's done a magnificent job, as he always does, and we're in pursuit of the other four that were, the other four or five that were involved. I also wanna mention, we put this on, we put this on social media, that the grandparents scam is alive and well, we had a gentleman last week, got a call from a guy who claimed to be their son, he had just run over a pedestrian, he was in jail, he needed money for bail, I think the loss in that case was over $10,000. Tried to do the right thing, they actually tried to call the son, the son wasn't answering his phone, I think they presumed that he really was in jail, they couldn't get through, they actually withdrew cash from the bank, a driver actually came to their house and picked up the package, you know, very, very overt, this is not, you know, we see a lot of them where the cash is put in FedEx package and shipped overnight, this one, this one actually picked up the package, so we're investigating that, you know, we just warn people that these scams are underway. And then, again, certainly back to Holbrook, I do just wanna piggyback on what Chief Bailey said, you know, part of the grant through us moving Holbrook has been replacement of our radios as well, our portables and mobiles are not in, Holbrook actually has 120 portables due for arrival, they'll then be programmed and issued to our offices, including the retired officers who are specials, who work detailed work, and overtime for us, our mobiles will all be replaced, so far, all the laptops and all of our radio cars have been replaced, all the old ones have been removed, the new ones are in, and the officers are operating on that, on that new equipment, there are also screens going up around the building that you'll be able, you walk down a car, you can be able to look up and see the status board, which cars are on calls, which cars are clear, and that sort of thing, it's something we don't have now, unless you actually walk into our prior dispatch center, now our police operations center, so, you know, we're happy to see that come as well. One more case I wanna mention, and then a general remark, and then I'll wrap it up. Recently, two of our officers were called to an address for a mental health call, a woman called, she said, my son is in mental distress, having a problem, he had actually, when the officers arrived, he slashed his throat, cut his wrist on one arm, and was holding a blunt knife. Our officers, of course, train this type of stuff, one thing that we do, and I'm not sure how the departments do it, that we have a clear riot shield in every radio tower, and that is for the use of armed subjects who don't have firearms, hammer, knife, that sort of thing. So many of these cases, you know, they can easily devolve into deadly force, our officers on arrival took the riot shields, they're in reports, they said, we pulled the riot shields from the cars and went in, they confronted the subject inside, they had a lot of conversation with him, one of the officers, Officer David Caramatica, actually knew him earlier on, went to school with him, very long conversation in the house, a lot of back and forth, they eventually got ahead and dropped the knife, Norwood Fire was right there, obviously, and transported him on a section, so, you know, peacefully resolved, but between the training and the way we equip our officers, allowed them to resolve that, and short of deadly force, actually short of any force, the officers did it on an excellent shot. And then lastly, I do just wanna mention, truly disappointed by what's going on with Norwood Hospital, it continues to be an impact for us, and I know it's, you know, the board members are gonna speak for you, I'm sure that you feel the same way, I was out a couple days last week, and my deputy chief tore the site with Norwood Fire, because they're wrapping that up, lock it up, gonna seal it up as best they can, it's already been exposed to the weather, not too much, we're concerned about people getting in there, we're concerned about livelihoods of town, we continue to send our officers, who have to jump in an ambulance on a section, and they're going out of town, they're going to Brockton, they're going to Needham, they're going, they're going all these other places, takes our powers out of commission, we're waiting longer times for responses on medicals, although that's improving now, because Norwood Fire has adjusted the number of ambulances that they can field, but this continues to be a, this continues to be an impact for the Norwood Police Department, this continues to be an impact on public safety of the town, we know it's not under your control, it's a private pension, that's not why I bring it up, I just have to express myself, continues to be a frustration for us.
Yes, and I know you said you don't speak for us, but I think you speak for us there, and, you know, we share that sentiment with you, it's frustrating, it's disappointing, and it's impacting your departments and the town, so. Is there any other news, perhaps?
I'm gonna be on my way soon. You know, so I've been thinking about this, this is a, this is a job that I love, I was talking to one of the officers the other day, of course, now it's the, hey, chief, geez, you're leaving, it's one of the folks, I became a cop when Jimmy Carter was president, put that in perspective for you, I've been a cop since 1977, and like, dates mean a lot to me, so I went and saw the general manager on a Sunday, texted him, I said, I need to see you for five minutes, and gave him my letter, that's because it ended my 47th year, and I'm gonna retire in the April.
I was kinda hoping he was there to arrest me, but...
And, yeah, I was a little nervous when he opened it, he didn't open it the whole way, but in the April, I will have been chief for exactly 12 years. The new chief, my replacement, will be sworn in on May 1st, which I'd be happy to attend, that's also the month of his birthday, May 1st, 1896, when the town took their policemen and their constable and made the Norwood Police Department, so I was sworn in on May 1st, my replacement will be sworn on May 1st, that'll give you exactly 12 years as chief. It will also, between now and the end of April, the problem's incredibly important to me, as you know, will allow the general manager to appoint a new chief, and then will allow us to work on vacancy for deputy chief, vacancy for lieutenant, vacancy for sergeant, one of the detectives is on the sergeant's business, so a patrolman, there's a potential for new detective out of that, there's certainly gonna be a new patrolman higher to the bottom, so this cascading of promotions that happens through the agency is an important time for the department, and then a lot of people will be boosted in their careers, it'll be a nice thing for me to be able to watch and see and participate in, my goal is to have all of that done before I leave, you know, so that the, so that the new chief knows who's he's got, he says, the staff will work together on this, somebody asked him recently, so who picks? Is it you or the chief, you know? And every promotion we make, and of course, they're all under the auspices of the general manager, of course, but a lot of the work on it happens within the department, then deputy chief Patton and I reach consensus on every one, and that's how our promotions and assignments are all made, and we'll continue to do that. If he and I are going in different directions, obviously, I would nod to him, given the circumstances, but that's not how we operate, we operate in consensus, that's how we do things.
Well, thank you so much, chief, I'm sure there'll be time in the future to thank you more appropriately, but thank you for your update, and I'm gonna let Mr. Plasko start off with any questions or comments.
Hi, chief, good evening.
Good evening.
I wanna know if you remember an old friend, do you remember Chief George Blazey?
I do.
Why do you remember him?
So, the long story, when I went on Westwood PD, George Blazey was a patrolman, and I'll tell you, one night I got in a car, because in those days you could go on the street, but the Westwood chief wouldn't let me on the street by myself, because I hadn't been in the academy, you could go on the street before the academy, and I got in the car, and he was, he was driving along, he goes, so, I was a senior in college, I got the job on semester break, senior in college, that's how young I was, and I worked 412 at the Westwood Police, and went to school during the day in my last semester, and I got in the car, he says, oh, you're, you have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice? I said, yes, he said, so, you're familiar with all the little, but the causes of crime? I said, that's right, he said, do you know you're a rush power? And I said, gee, no, they don't teach you that in college. They teach you what causes crime, they don't teach a lot about necessarily what to do about. True, there's a true story, I remember that, I remember driving down Clacko Tree Street, going by the old Westwood Lodge, and him saying how I explained it to him, and it was like a rolling that night, so he eventually became my sergeant, he eventually became my lieutenant, I tried to get a job in the Drug Enforcement Administration, and President Reagan was elected, he froze federal hiring, and a lawyer was slated to go to the academy, that was all put on hold, he got the job here as the chief, he would tell you, he was second choice, they hired somebody who then wouldn't come, and John Carroll called him up, you still interested? He says, am I interested? So I came to work that day, and he said, guess what, let me guess what happened, close the door, and I walked in, and he told me what was going on, and within a few days, he said, you know, if you're ever interested in a transfer, I know you're looking, move, you know, consider, consider the Westwood PD, and that was in November 1981, and he showed up at my house in May of 1982, he said, we have a vacancy, he's still interested, and that's how I, and that's how I got to know, and I worked for him, he was chief of police for 17 years, and I worked for him for about 15 of those 17, and then he retired in 1998, just before I went to Wellesley, he was influential, talking to me around the time that I was really struggling with the whole Wellesley decision, and then when the chief's position opened up in Norwood, and I had been deputy there just 12 years in Wellesley, he was, he was, you know, we had a phone call, and he said to me, says, another story, I'm starting to take up your time, but we, I talked to him on the phone, because I stay in touch with him, and he said, you know, that job in Norwood's gonna open up, and I was not applying for chief's jobs when I was in Wellesley, I was very loyal to Chief Cunningham, but I told him, the only thing I'm really interested in is Norwood, if that opens up, and Chief Blazey said to me, you know, you don't want Norwood to come up with a process that will exclude you, and just think about mentioning that to John Carroll, now John's no longer with us, so I can't tell his story. I hung up and talked to him, and I was like, nervous, I called, I called the town hall, I got Debbie Melcher, hi Billy, I said, can I get in to see John? Yeah, you wanna come today? And I said, yeah, he's, come right over, he's in the office, okay, and I came over, he walked in, he leans back when I walk in, he says, this is the old chief's job, we're like six months out, and I said, it is, and he said, I'm gonna stay inside, I'm gonna hide from the things within, and I was like, I don't know, I was thinking on my feet, but I said, do I agree with that? That's a good philosophy, shows up and moves, I understand that, she said, you do? I said, yeah, do me a favor, he says, what? I said... I said, "Consider me an internal candidate, I was here for eighteen years, grand detective for fourteen, everything we worked wrong, I handed to me, I never let you down." He went, "What else is going on, help the family." It's John Carroll, and he completely changed the subject, and we visited for maybe ten, fifteen minutes. I said, "I gotta go, I gotta take, I've taken up enough of your time." And when they announced the requirements for the job, you had to have shared in a supervisory position in the Norwood Police Department for five years or more. And I said, "But that's me, I applied for the job." Well, one more. The end of the story is, in applying for the job, within, within a couple of weeks, I get a call at my desk in, in Wellesley, he calls, and, "How you doing?" I said, "Good." He said, "You applied for the Norwood job?" I said, "Yes, I did." He said, "They selected the panel, and I'm on it." I said, "You are?" He said, "Yes, and this will be the last time you and I talk until that's over." I said, "Roger that." That's him. Straight as an arrow. And I walked in the room, and he was sitting there, and the rest is history, as they say, but that, that's him, that's, and you, you know him. He said, "There's a large time to talk until that's over, and Roger that, Chief." Turned up the phone.
I, I know most of that story, and I was going to lead you through it, but...
I'm sorry.
No, that's beautiful, he just gave it all to us, and I, it's probably better that it came right direct like that. One time, I saw Chief DeBlazy, and I said, "I didn't know a police chief could be a thief. You could be a thief and be a police chief." He said, "What are you talking about?" And I said, "It was a great job, the way you stole Bill Brooks." You know, right, right from the beginning, you were a shining star in, in Norwood. You've been a great leader, and it's been great to know you all these years, and now that you're retired, I'm an old retired guy, we don't have to meet in the supermarket at night anymore, we can do it during the daytime.
That's right, that's right. I see more roast brothers than I do any other. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Mr. Seddon.
Chief, I've known you a little bit, know my lifetime here in Norwood, but I, I just keep going back to that football field, how you flew back for our ten-and-oh team up in Norwood High for a state run for our football team, and the guy in the back room here, Ronnie Marshals, he was on that team, and that's, that's the quality of guy you are. You can't tell that the brain assault of a person by their actions, and you've done it all your life, and I congratulate you, and it's a pleasure to know you, and we'll hopefully have a last call when you retire.
Thank you, sir. Maybe I'll see you soon again, yeah, a couple of months out.
Ms. Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Each year, I knew someday this moment would come, and I dreaded it so, so much, because you're just so wonderful in this role in the community, just an absolute thought leader in the industry, and there's just, there's just no words, and so, you know, the, the day was going to come eventually, we can't live forever, we can't work forever, but I just, just tremendous work, tremendous work with the community, tremendous work with the officers, with families, just, just absolutely phenomenal, and it's been such a joy to be able to get to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and this is, to the length of my tenure, you know, I've got to go back, and I should have mentioned this, you know, Mr. Mizuko, when he came here, "You're not retiring, you're not leaving, you're not retiring," he kept, and he must have said that, and I would keep going, "No, no, it's the law, you gotta get out at sixty-five, now you gotta..." And then he closed the door, and he said, "No, seriously." And then that, and that began, and he came from here to the board, he went, he went to town meeting, told the chiefs this, the two union presidents get up and spoke in favor, and Tom Beating was unanimous, and then they clapped. And I told my wife, I said, "Make up stance." See where this is going. But thank you very much for the remarks, I appreciate it. But every second has been a, has been my pleasure.
Great, thank you. Mr. Donnelly.
Well, it's a little bit too early to say goodbye, or even to call you a short timer, so I'll save our, save all that for next meeting. But just an observation, your description of the process that you're, that we're engaging in for your, your successor, kind of just demonstrates how well you have organized your team, your department, for such an eventuality, the fact that you have qualified, trained people at every level who are able, qualified, and skilled at taking on those new responsibilities. You're leaving us in great hands, and I, I think on behalf of the, the town of Norwood, I think we owe you a big thanks for that, as well as many other things that we will talk about at another time. Congratulations.
Mr. Donnelly, thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. I will save my remarks as well. I will say, though, that I have about a dozen Chief Brooks baseball cards at my house, and I think they just went up in value a little bit.
They did.
Normally, when someone retires and they had a good career, they get more valuable, so thank you so much, and thank you for being here tonight, we appreciate it.
You're very welcome, it's my pleasure, good to see you all.
Sir.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a liquor license application hearing, we have the folks out in the hall. Great, so thank you for your patience. It's not every day we have the chief retire, so we appreciate you taking...
It's our pleasure, Mr. Chair.
Great. I think there should be enough chairs for everybody, and if not, you can pull some of these.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can pull that one in, you can go in front of the screen.
We're on the left.
Sorry about that. Great, thanks so much. Okay, Christine, I'm going to have you read the hearing announcement, and then I'll turn the floor over to you. You can introduce the team here, and it'll be yours.
Application has been made, boy, sitting board of the town of Norwood for all alcoholic beverages for Arena NL DBA, Launch Entertainment Park, located at five seventy Boston Province Highway, Norwood, Massachusetts. Ryan Devon, manager of record, under section twelve, chapter one thirty-eight of Massachusetts general laws, as amended for the sale of all alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises of five seventy Boston Province Highway, Norwood, Massachusetts. Description of premises is as follows. A twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirteen square foot warehouse, building with one floor and one lofted area. There is an entrance, check-in, and arcades at the front of the establishment. Past the arcades, there is a counter service restaurant, seating, and bathrooms. The seating area is divided from the other attractions with a half wall. Food and drink are not self-service and must be purchased from a cashier at the counter service restaurant. Public hearing on this application will be held on Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven o'clock PM in the Harry B. Brothers Chambers, Room Thirty-four, Norwood Town Hall.
Great, thank you so much, Christine. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I've got a minute for the applicant, please excuse my voice, I'm recovering from a cold. I'm, I'm here on behalf of my client, who operates the Launch in Norwood. That's the location that we're discussing tonight. Launch, before I get into that, I'll introduce the members of the team. To my right, Ryan Devon, to his right is Melissa, behind me, Ally, and to her left, Joe. So, I think that Launch is proud to consider itself a good citizen of Norwood, and we come before you with a concept that's not proven in Norwood, but that's been proven in other locations of Launch's business, a franchise that has locations, for instance, that have liquor licenses in Warwick, Rhode Island. I'm Mr. Mass, Queens, New York, Orlando, and Alabama. And my client was just recently approved for a liquor license in the town of North Audubon for a forthcoming Launch location, also on Route One, so this is a concept that's being sort of rolled out franchise-wide. In addition to it being sort of a proven concept in these other locations, Launch does have corporate policies that we feel address some of the concerns that might be present in having a liquor license in this sort of environment, but beyond that, we're happy to address any concerns that the board has.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for the introduction. Anyone else from the team want to speak at this moment, or?
Sure, I'll just say, I, I'm the principal owner of, of Launch. I bought the business back in twenty nineteen, it was originally started by Ty Law, a football player in the... Well, I used to say Ty Law's Launch on, on the side. Twenty nineteen, I, I took it over to a partner, and we ran it for about a year. We did a pretty extensive renovation back in late twenty nineteen and early twenty twenty. We opened a month before the pandemic hit, and it was hard, and we, we made it through. I think we made it through because we're, we're such a staple of the, of the community. We, we do, on average, across our four locations, about a hundred and eighty birthday parties a week, a weekend, and Norwood's one of our busiest, or is our busiest location. So, you know, it's, it's something that we've survived through, people love us, they love what we do, and really, this is a result of feedback we're getting from our customers, and pressure that we're seeing that our competitors are doing as well. So, we're not looking to, to build a nightclub or a bar atmosphere. We're, we're looking to serve the, the occasional beer, wine, and liquor when, when a parent is there most often, you know, with a child, and, and, you know, they're looking for something to do while their, while their children's are off, on the trampoline, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Open it up to the board.
Oh, forgive me. I have, I have for, just a, a couple of things, you can show us now?
Yeah, okay.
So, I only have two copies already. I'm pretty broke.
Give me the oldest ones. Give me the oldest ones.
There you go. That, that has a layout in there, and it has a menu, and it, and it has, I don't know, what else is happening there? It does not have some of the corporate policies that Launch has, but we have all this here. We can point to it, and we can actually follow up with an email with, you know, our standards and policies.
At the core of it.
I did some of those one hundred and eighty birthday parties.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that. We'll open it up to the board for questions, comments. Mr. Seddon.
I went in there Saturday night, because I saw this on the agenda Friday afternoon, and it was packed.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, I couldn't take the noise, it was packed, but I'm new on the board, so I'll leave it up to some of these senior members, and they'll jump in right behind it, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
To see what, what the idea was, where they're going to put it, and locations, and...
Okay, Ms. Crowe.
I was actually also going to defer to some of the other members as I'm scrutinizing floor plans. Conceptually, I am familiar with other types of, how shall I describe it? Active entertainment, I guess is what we'll call it.
Family entertainment centers, EPIs.
Yeah, family entertainment centers. And a lot of them are moving into this territory where they're, they're serving drinks for the parents, and then everyone else is off-roaming on the activities. So, it's not completely unknown to me, so it makes sense to me why you would be seeking this. So, I, but I am interested in hearing possibly some board.
But for the record, too, if I could just, the, some of the competitive pressure that we see, and I'll, I'll save some names you may know, you may not know. Putcheck, which is just going to the Natick Mall, very popular, it's, it's miniature golf, and they serve beer, wine, full alcohol. Level Ninety-Nine is also a similar concept of what we do. Urban Air is a direct competitor of what we do, they serve beer and wine in Bellingham. Thank you, thank you, guys. The fourth one, Dave and Buster's. Dave and Buster's is very similar to what we do. We have more to offer than Dave and Buster's, but Dave and Buster's also has a little bar, restaurant as well.
Okay, great. Mr. Donnelly.
Could you tell me, what, what are your operating hours, and how would they be different from hours of operations for the all alcohol beverage sector?
So, so typically, through the week, we're typically closed Mondays at all of our locations. Melissa will jump in with fact-checking me on these, but typically, we're open three-thirty to seven, Tuesday through Friday, Tuesday through Thursday. Three-thirty...
To eight on Friday.
Why, you guys just answered.
On Friday, three-thirty to eight, and then on Saturday and Sunday. So, Saturdays were ten to eight, and Sunday, ten to six. We do have a toddler time at nine AM on Sundays, where just five and under may join.
And would those be the same, what would you, would you restrict the hours of the all alcohol consumption differently from those operating hours?
We would be willing to, to restrict the, especially during the morning hours. I would add one more thing, that we, we do plan to open a little later, certain nights of the week, based upon what we're seeing demand, and so, I, I just want, I just want to say that so you know that this has nothing to do with this particular application, but we may extend the hours a little bit later. But we're willing to, to open, we hadn't considered it, but it's something we do want to do.
So, I haven't, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the site. I, I see in the plans you submitted some, some drawings, building designs. Could you just tell me a little bit about how you would set up your, your operation for the all alcohol?
Yeah, sure. So, in, in there, there, you'll see one of the pictures, it says, it's called Bar Hops. That's the name of the brand of the, the bar in the Gormick location, so if you refer to that picture, the size of what we're talking about is only about a third of what you see there. So, a much smaller area. When, when you pass through the, the main ticket area, where you buy your pasta to go and use the services, buy arcade cards or whatever, as you pass that, there's a, a section called Crave. Crave is our restaurant. It's counter service, we have a seating area for Crave. The intention of where we would serve that would be behind the counter, on the far left-hand side of that, and about approximately one-third of the size of the Bar Hops that you see there. We won't have an actual bar with, with taped stools or seating like that. It's just counter service, and we'll restrict it to just the, the first level. No alcohol beer up on the platform. Quite frankly, we don't want anything up there, because everything that goes up there turns into stains on the carpet, so we'll, we'll restrict it to just the first, you know, away from the, the, what we call the platform space, or the platform space.
So, it sounds like, like almost a service bar kind of an operation?
Yeah.
And what kind of measures would you take? You, you have a clientele that, yes, it's family oriented, so what kind of measures will you take to secure the service area, particularly when we're talking about the all alcohol beverages that, you know, or the hard liquor and so forth? How would that be secured?
Secured as in, as in lock and key, you mean?
Lock and key, just trying to diminish the possibility that a child could access the service bar, the bar area.
So, so first off, we'll, we'll make sure, we have signage, and, and our, our staff will be trained to make sure that nobody is allowed up onto the court space with it. With regard to where we will have it, we have, you've seen those lock and key refrigerators, the see-through, you know, gatorade, so we will, we can hold it within that, there for, you know, for all, all of the ethics. We're not planning to do any tap, it would all be canned, canned beverages. With the exception of bottle, wouldn't be, which wouldn't be handed out, but would be poured into a cup and then handed to an individual. In all likelihood, the vast majority of, of this is going to be consumed in the Crave seating area. That's, that's likely, yeah. Yeah, the seating area, yeah. And our staff will be trained to make sure that if we ever see an unattended beer or wine or whatever, to immediately pick it up, throw it away, and that's going to be a policy. If someone complains, we're going to have a new one, but we're not, we're not going to take that risk. I have four children, it's a very big topic, I have two in high school, so I coached soccer in high schools as well. I coached in the town of Sherburne, we actually had a death from it, and I spent twenty minutes in practice talking about, you know, the risks and the dangers of everything, so I take it very seriously. And, you know, the last thing I want is, is any headaches, right? I mean, we have a knock on wood, this is real wood, it's knock on real wood somewhere.
Probably not.
We, we have a, a very good track record, we have no claims, Norwood has never had a, a claim against us where that, that we've actually had to, to settle or pay out, because we take safety very, very seriously. And obviously, this is, you know, adding in a new, a new influence, and, you know, we'll, we'll maintain that same standard that we've always held.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and I will just, I'm going to give Mr. Plasko a chance, but, you know, having been there several times, several, several times, I, you know, I do think that the way that the operation is staffed, it's very responsible, a lot of eyes on everything, so in, in the space, it's, it's a big space, but, you know, sometimes, at big spaces, you can feel like maybe there aren't things being looked over, but I, I do think that you've, you've run a good business, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Donnelly hit on a number of them. I was going to first off say, what's Bar Hops? That makes for an explanation. Also, the hours of operation, the menu you provided in here, are you looking to make any changes in the general operation at all from what we might know down there?
General operations or adding more food, you mean?
Well, obviously, you're changing and adding alcohol.
Yeah.
But are you going to change the menu, are you going to change the physical layout at all?
No physical layout changes.
Other than behind the bar?
Other than behind the bar, exactly. And we, we may add, Launch Corporate has a, a signature cocktail that has like a menu, which we can, which we did print it up, we can forward it to you with a couple of options. We are planning to add more food, we just added the fried food a year ago, year and a half.
Yeah, we got an auto fryer, so we can add more.
Do the, the fried food, chicken wings, french fries, things like that, but, yeah, we'll, we'll introduce things and test and see what else, you know, what else works, but there's no drastic, wholesale changes to the footprint, the layout, or anything of that.
Okay, so in operation, now that the alcohol's out, customer comes in, goes up to the counter, orders his drink, to check out that he's old enough, whatever, she, and they serve them. What happens next to that with that customer? Can they go over and play games? Do they have to go back to the seating area?
Yeah, we are, we don't intend to restrict it from away, from the, the game area. In reality, it's, it's, you know, it's practical that they're, we'll be holding it. We won't have any cup holders per se where they can, you know, set it down. That's the last thing we want. But we didn't plan on restricting it away from the arcade area. But we intend and we can ask people to, you know, that it be consumed in the Crave seating area.
And our manager, you're back previous experience with alcohol?
So we have.
I know you've took the test, but.
Yep, I've taken the test and we do have at our other locations of businesses, we do allow alcohol and we don't sell it, but we do allow and make sure that it's drained responsibly at the other businesses that we have. And because they're private locations, they have private use of the facility. So, but we don't sell the alcohol.
But you don't specifically, Melissa doesn't specifically, Joe does, Joe has experience at your bowling alley and has.
Yep.
And other businesses as well. To the best of my knowledge, we have four people that are currently tip certified. Obviously, anybody who would be serving it would have to be.
Does establishment?
No, uh, we have four people who currently are tip certified within our, within our whole.
And how many, how many locations are that again?
We have four Launch locations. A lot of us though, we kind of work across. So Melissa's job is, she's the, she's the operations manager, our COO across all of our businesses. So Joe, you know, wears a lot of hats as well, right? So the people that will specifically be in the park every single day will also be tip certified as well.
And again, could you clarify, I missed the operations and closing hours?
Monday through, Monday's closed, Tuesdays to Thursdays, 7 o'clock.
Actually, I don't care what you're closing today. What are you looking for, intending to do with the license?
Still 7 o'clock, Tuesday to Thursday, 8 o'clock on, possibly 9 o'clock and as late as 10 o'clock on Saturday. That's the latest we can stay up in now. We've never done that, we'd have to test it out and see whether or not it's, it's still busy. Typically, our business is weighing in those last couple hours of the day anyway, so.
And on the weekends, you open at 9:00?
10:00 AM.
10:00?
10:00 AM with the exception of toddler time on 9:00 AM on Sunday mornings. Is that right?
Yes.
All the questions out of operation. So I'm all old fashioned. And a little concerned about the young people in the community, that your customers, wherever they're coming from. I know they're exposed to alcohol everywhere, at home, parents take them to restaurants, whatever. Somehow it seems to me different in a fun place and adults having gone along with them. I really would have a problem with the alcohol if it's going to be consumed out with, out at the games, playing skee ball and also having a highball. I just don't buy that. If we were to put a restriction to be near the serving area and that seating area, you think you could live with that or?
It wouldn't be our first choice, but if that's what the board feels that we should do, maybe if I can propose maybe a probation, a probational period, something like a year of, of that and so long as we have no issues or problems, maybe expanding it. Happy to even come back and get further approvals for that if necessary. But yeah, I'm happy to work with what's necessary. I mean, truthfully, this is a result of what our customers want, right? So my hesitation isn't, isn't about me. I mean, you'll never see me drinking outside, ever. But it's about what do my customers want? And as much as I agree with you, I understand, you know, there's a lot of businesses out there that do have that. And we could, we could maintain that and just say, hey, it must be drunk in the Crave seating area. We do have birthday party rooms upstairs, but those are all private party rooms. That's, I feel like that's, that's different. If that's what the board feels that the only way they will approve it, I will live with, you know, with what you guys suggest, so.
So if a restriction was put on, it obviously does a restriction. Without the restriction, your current plans, the potty rooms, you intend to be able to have the alcohol in the potty rooms?
I would, I would have, I would suggest that they be allowed in the potty rooms. But, I mean, to practically put it, what was really happening? You've got a lot of kids, you know, sitting there eating a cake or eating their pizza and the parents are standing up usually in the rooms with their backs against the wall and they'll probably have a, you know, a drink in their hand, you know, a beer or a wine. And talking, maybe that's what, that's what it looks like. It's not, it's not a crazy atmosphere. It's crazy, it's loud, but it's not the crazy because of the parents drinking. It's usually the kids, so. So, but that would be a, I would propose that we, we have it in there.
Sorry, just, every, every party has a party host, so there's always a person in your room for, for each party, so.
They are on a second level as well. They're, and the stairs to go up to that second level are right off from the restaurant, so they wouldn't go through the game area of the arcades.
But I might use one of those potty rooms to bring my Little League team to celebrate the fact that we just won the town championship and their parents, and then we're going to have the alcohol. That mixture would be allowed.
We would intend it to be.
In other words, it wouldn't be reserved just for me bringing my company, we're all adults.
So to be clear, they're, they're all private party rooms. So if your, if your party wants to restrict alcohol because it's a Little League and, you know, you don't want that beer or wine around them. I just got back from a hockey tournament the same way. You know, we didn't have any beer or wine around, around the kids. But, you know, we had it, we had some drinks in the hotel lobby when the kids were off, you know, swimming or whatever, you know. So we can, that can be done either at each individual level, but if and when we have a party where the hosts often do say, hey, we'd like to have beer and wine here. And as Melissa mentioned, our other businesses, we do allow that as long as it's done responsibly. And, you know, of all legal age, you know, people, then, you know, we don't see that as a problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, coming in, I had an idea of sort of how this would work or having been in the space and, but I think the compelling argument for me is that, you know, you're looking to do this to say, to stay competitive because you have these other places that have these liquor licenses, they're offering maybe this much more of an incentive for a parent to come there. I, you know, I, I get that and I appreciate what you've said about when you started the business and getting through the pandemic and I'm sure it has not been easy. In terms, this is just a general question, but with more and more of these types of places sort of popping up, not necessarily at Chirpoolport, but, you know, with Top Vault and, you know, other places. But it's all under the same type of license, right? I feel like the state, and this is kind of outside of what we're talking about, I feel like the state should really categorize these differently.
Yeah, there's a problem with it's beer or wine or all alcohol. And the requirement of the license is really to serve all alcohol, all alcohol. So some of the micro businesses that might want to offer just a couple of drinks, there's no real distinction, you're really supposed to be providing a wider menu. And we're limited in the number of beer and wine and all alcohol licenses we have. The process we have to go through to gain additional license requires legislative approval. It's quite, quite lengthy, unfortunately. But it's a, very much a dated statute for a different era.
It's just changing. And so back to the North Attleboro location, so that has not opened up, but you have secured a license.
We have, we secured, yes.
So if you could go back to when you were starting in Norwood, would that have probably been the path if?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, truthfully, this, the Norwood, the Norwood location was the first location that I embarked on. I'm probably glad I didn't because I got to get my, I'm sure I understood the business better. Now, having operated there in Woburn, in Framingham, in Westboro, those are all locations that we operate. Now we're at the point where we've got, we've got the systems down, we've got controls, we know what we're doing. Let's introduce something here that is what our customers are asking for.
And so the pitch to North Attleboro was the same as here, just that you're going to start from day one?
From day one, that's the only difference, yeah. All of our other locations, we've already, we've already processed up and planned for as well.
Okay, okay. Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. These lovely people were kind enough to give me a tour.
I know, it's just, check, go. It's my drink too.
Now I forgot my question.
A tour, you're talking about a tour?
The air and wine, you're going to have signature drinks. Mr. Sad was there Saturday night, the place was rocking. I was there once this summer with my grandson during the day. As far as I'm concerned, it was rocking. But number of people, activity. Saturday night, how many adults would there have been there?
Seven nights or slower. I mean, they, they, we do, we do start to get slower around 6 o'clock, right? That last hour. Most people want their birthday parties either in the morning or early afternoon. And birthday parties is one of the biggest draws that we have. But it does start to get slower. I, I couldn't tell you exactly, I mean, I can look up the data and figure it out, but I would say it's at a, that 6 to 8 o'clock hour on a Saturday in Norwood, 50 people maybe.
Yeah, it gets really slow at that time.
Yeah, I mean, we, we get as busy as, we have capacity of, I think, 170? 160 in Norwood? Capacity of, that's how many, how many people we can actually have on the platform. We could have, obviously, well more than that total, we could have, I don't know, 500 people. But we, we would typically have, if there's 160 risk bands, so we'd probably have about 200 people, including parents and siblings and whatever. So 2 to 225. So we're talking about 50 people at, from about 6 to.
Our busiest time is from like 2 to 4 is when it's really busy. It's like that bewitching hour of the day.
And Norwood is, is a little bit unique because it goes a little bit later than some of the other parks. Like it's, I would almost say 2 to 5 for Norwood, whereas most of our other locations, that P time starts slowing down after 4. A little bit late, a little bit later ground in Norwood, but late, you know, like 5, not like 10.
All right, thank you, so.
I'm going to circle back to over here. Oh.
Nope.
Okay.
No, my only concern is the, the amount of people in that little eating area and migrating out and having chaos. That's just my own, my own thought.
Yeah. Mr. Plasko, you had made a comment about perhaps should the license be awarded to restricting consumption to a certain area?
Well, they, my idea was pretty much what they have, somebody drew with a, is that orange or?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm colorblind. These, this area that, so they could come out and be served and actually, it's not that, correct me. Really just boxing in the service area so that they can go here. They can't come over here where the games are. And of course they can go to bathrooms, but not with, not with an alcohol. So they just around the seating area into the service area because it is self-service. What I term as self-service, they go back to counter service.
Would you also be inclined to include the second floor private space?
Yeah, well, that's, that I just actually learned about. I don't think we talked about the potty rooms, or we did, I've forgotten about it.
Because I, you know, the way you described it, I certainly have been one of those parents kind of standing.
Pretty accurate?
Yeah, uh, yes, accurate. Personally, should the board decide to award this, I, I think because of the way that those, that area is isolated from the rest and staffed, the way that you had mentioned it's staffed in a high level, personally, should we award license, be comfortable with also including that space as somewhere where consumption would be allowed. And I think it's a pretty direct path from where it would be served. You're not going through the whole building.
Yep.
You literally just walk by the bathrooms and then upstairs, yeah.
Right.
Just a question, on the area that I'm kind of like thinking of, as we had been saying, that's just where the people eat the pizza in the little restaurant area, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure, okay, just wanted to know what.
We, we did just extend it a little bit.
Add more seating and there is an option to add more seating against the wall. There's a, there's a wall that we could put more seating over there, so there is.
As long as it's encapsulated to a certain area, before one of that, kids aren't jumping in. I know they're going to be in there, but like going to some other restaurant to eat with their parents.
Yeah.
That's what it's all about.
That's a good question. So seating wise, what were you thinking numbers?
So, how many we have right now?
How many seats you have, yeah?
50, I was going to say like 49.
In that area that we're talking about?
You have, you have, excuse me.
No, no.
You have a, you have a kind of convivial license, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you know what's numbers on there?
Not, I can't come to my head, sorry.
It's 49.
Yeah.
You don't have enough to use?
49, she said.
Go with her.
Oh, there we are, 49, did you hear that? Okay. Ask a question.
Yeah, of course.
If we, if it is restricted to that area, is it possible to, if we were to make it bigger, that seating areas have still become like okay? You know, you know what I'm asking? Yeah, I, I think I do. You're asking.
Could we expand it even larger?
If we restrict it to an area that doesn't include gaming, could you make that area bigger?
Right. We would, we would like to make it bigger, quite frankly, because we want a place for parents not up on the platform to, to hang out and to, and to, and quite frankly, there's not much space there. And that's the biggest, one of the biggest complaints that we get is that there's no place for parents to be.
And the sightlines are pretty decent in terms of being able to see.
They're, they're good. It's all low, it's all low, you know, this high half walls and set them, yeah.
Ms. Crowe.
So just points of information for the board members. Some of the competing names that they have put out, these are businesses that I've been to multiple times. My experience attending places like that, when I've found the other patrons to do very optimal roles of, with children with them, they have not, from my visits, tended to try to go out in the very physically active areas because they're worried about losing the drink that they paid for. Drinks aren't necessarily always cheap and so do you want to, you know, who I've spilled it after I just bought it. And so I found that most of the activity, when I've experienced this at other very active entertainment locations, has tended to try to congregate naturally towards seating areas because they don't want to lose the drink. So I figured that might be useful information.
Mr. Donnelly, anything else?
Nothing.
Anyone else? As this is a public hearing, we will open, or interesting, any comments or questions from the public? There's no one out in the hallway?
Nobody on Zoom?
No one online?
Online, Tony?
There's no one online. Is anyone out there, Kerry? There's no one outside.
Kerry, you want to weigh in or are you okay?
She, she, she clients a way in.
That's an inside joke.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, pleasure of the board.
All lights on, Bob.
How we do this, someone has to make a motion, do you approve or deny? You'll have the discussion before we have the vote. So a lot of times it's, it's an effort to just put forward a, a motion that continues our discussion. I'm going to put a motion forward to deny and I'll explain that in a moment, if I can get a second.
Do we have a second? Mr. Donnelly, it's a motion to deny, second made by Mr. Plasko.
So.
Discussion.
For discussion. Very good presentation. Your business going on five years here, I think that that's all very good. I think my concerns has to do with just the classification of the license as an alcohol beverage. You know, the, this particular license has been up for other approvals previously and I'm, I'm having a hard time distinguishing the denial we did in those, those three to, to here. Personally, I think I would be more comfortable if this was a. Personally, I think I would be more comfortable if this was a, a beer and wine license that was available, but it's not. I think the fact that it's all alcohol beverage puts a different spin on, on, on how I, I consider the issuing of this license. When we look at the, the folks or the organizations that hold an alcohol, all alcohol beverage license throughout the town, it is more typical for them to be restaurants, large clubs, things such as that. And I'm, I'm a little bit wary of, of issuing an all alcohol beverage license for a facility that, that, that is that much different from those more hospitality-related clients that are, companies that, that have been issued these in the past. So, that's my two cents, but I'll end my discussion there and split the plate.
Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. I again was impressed with the presentation and the individuals. If it was a different type of, slightly different operation, different location, I'd probably be thrilled to be making a motion to grant. But I look at the license and how I feel licenses are meant to be used in the community and service to the public, if you will, with those licenses. And this geographical area, within a half a mile, right on Route One, there's five licenses already. Four on the same side as the highways you are, and one on the opposite side. I think the licenses again should be open pretty much to the public, welcoming to the public. I don't think your type of operation or location does that. It really limits it to your customers, to your closed audience, if you will. And sometimes we want to close places earlier than they want to be operating. But in this case, I think it's just the opposite. I think the hours are too limited to justify that it's serving the public, if you will, in the, in the manner in which it's intended to be. So, when I think of the broader audience out there, that I, as a member of the licensing authority, should be considering an issue on the license, I think we fall a little short there. So, basically, I think that the geographical area is already well-served and that the applicant just has not proven to me, given enough reasons to warrant an indication that their, or an acceptance that their operation would serve a public need or benefit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Plasko. Ms. Crowe?
So, from my perspective, on one hand, the limitedness of the hours is a concern to me. On the other hand, I do see the shift in the market, as it were, as more and more adults are responding to a different type of entertainment, essentially. And not just this particular business, just these types of businesses in general. And I don't know that our current, I don't know that our current processes sort of account for that. We sort of have a very binary, there's restaurants, there's clubs, there's, this is sort of a new flavor of public engagement that I don't think is well-understood yet. So, I'm not strongly opposed. I, I lean more favorably because I do think that this is just the way the market's trending. But I, I can see the points of, of my fellow board members and could support a denial for the reasons cited.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Sad?
Well, I concur with you, seeing the members and knowing the block, so we'll go from there.
Okay, and I'll just, I'll weigh in too. I would not vote for a motion to deny. I, I, I think I've been convinced that, you know, you've made a compelling argument, business-wise, operation-wise, the track record at the other sites. While at the same time respecting the comments from my colleagues, I think, you know, this is, this is a hard one because I do think that your presentation, your organization, your application, your facility, all of these things check a lot of boxes for us. For me, you know, personally, that, having been there several times, initially, when this came forward, I thought, well, you know, I didn't really think it was the best use or, just because of sort of the, maybe I've locked out the experience of standing there as a parent for hours. But I, you know, I do think that that adds an element to the business that is unique. And as we were saying earlier, you know, I almost wish that the state would say, you know, towns get these, you know, five licenses for these types of entertainment places. And, you know, maybe that's the future, maybe that's what the future will be. So, personally, for me, I, I would not support a motion to deny, eventually would support a motion to support, but obviously, that, you know, the pleasure of the board is to not have it. So, the motion on the floor, oh, and can we talk just quickly while we're still open? Sort of, if the application is denied, what happens next? What are the options for our?
They've got their attorney, so they're well-advised, but they have five days to apply, to appeal to the ABCC, who would hold a full hearing. I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but the same license was denied to another entertainment venue, and they have appeals. It's on appeal now. We have had the hearing, but waiting for a decision from the ABCC. They have requested and been granted by the ABCC a hold so that they will not consider, if you appeal, they're not going to consider your appeal until they, there's a conclusion to, including possibly going to court, until there's some conclusion to their, and that would be whether we granted it to make or not. So, just so you're aware that that's out there.
Right, so we're taking this case as individual, you know, that we're case. In terms of if, if the license, if the application were denied this evening and a beer and wine became available tomorrow, is there any reason that the applicants couldn't come forward for that?
No, they, they can apply for a different license. They cannot apply for the same license, the same operators, and the same location for a year, unless the board has a discretion to allow you to, that you don't have a, a right per se for, for a year.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I could very briefly entertain a motion just to reopen the public meeting, just to mention one thing.
Sure. The hearing's closed, but the board can still engage with the applicants.
So, I just would, I would be willing, as if the board would reconsider, consider this, to restrict and to limit the area specifically to the seating area of Crave, to address some of the concerns that you raised about the arcade. And as I mentioned, we're considering opening the hours longer. I'm, I'm, would we, I would be willing to extend the hours on certain days of the week, Friday and Saturday as well, to stay open later. Because I understand the benefit of staying open later. I mean, we, you, you suggest that we have a, a certain type of audience, I'm not going to deny that, but I also think we are open to all. We, we do not, we don't discriminate. It's not just kids that are coming in. We have some older people coming in as well that just want to play games like they would at other.
An arcade game, yes.
Virtual reality, laser tag, other, other things that, that we do often, or just food. So, we, we would also entertain staying open later hours to, to accommodate that greater good of reaching more people.
I know we want to keep this going, we've already closed the hearing, but I appreciate that. But if we were, there was a motion to grant, I would be trying to make some amendments to put certain restrictions on, and this would have been interesting. But my basic philosophy and result of the hearing, the information we got from the hearing is still the same.
Okay, any other comments from the board? So, the motion on the floor made by Mr. Donnelly is a motion to deny, that was seconded by Mr. Plasko. So, I will hold forward on the motion to deny the application. Mr. Sad?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 And I, chair votes no, so three to two to deny the application. It was not, not an easy decision. You can, Tina, thank you. And I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll see you again.
We appreciate you.
You have options, obviously, and if you need anything from this office, please contact Christine, and we'll get back to you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
That was a tough one, nice presentation.
Yeah, it was tough. Is, is there any interest in seeking a beer and wine license through the legislature? Or would the board want to take that up at a later time?
Hi. Hi, let's, let's take that up, but I, I think that's a good suggestion because perhaps if there were one available, that would have maybe been a slim dunk.
Yeah, you know, is it appropriate for us to pursue that but first determine whether or not the applicant would be interested?
Absolutely. You're just giving the board the option, yeah.
Right, okay, great.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Thank you so much for waiting and for braving that storm, traveling. I know you, there were police escorts and snowshoes, et cetera.
Had your own plow, right?
Right.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate it. But this means you don't have to come to the next one there, you know? So, please introduce yourself, and the floor is yours.
Sure, excuse the broken glasses, I kicked them down Central Street coming up tonight. So, I'm Carrie Karthi, the Director of the Council on Aging and Senior Center. So, tonight, I thought I would just give you some highlights. I'm working on the annual report for the Executive Office of Alter Feers that I do each year. So, I just thought I'd bring some highlights to all of you, so you know what's happening at the Senior Center. This past year, we welcomed three hundred and sixty-five new members. Our average daily attendance at this center is a hundred and fifty-six people, and now throughout the day. We have sixteen exercise classes and, as you know, many other programs, a lot of special events, educational events, lots of parties, we have lots of parties. The lunch program is going really great. We're continuing with a grab and go. We started that in 2020, and it was so successful that we continue it. We also have volunteer delivery drivers, so we deliver lunches four days a week, and the option to eat in as well, which people are starting to really do with them. So, we're averaging over three hundred meals a week. And it's offered four days a week during the school year and two times during the summer months, and along with our Tuesday night dinners. The senior center bus, the medical transportation, is very busy. We now have, now have three medical vehicles that are used daily. We have, welcome Deirdre Carney as our Transportation Outreach Coordinator, and that physician has been very busy. With the hospital being closed and many doctors moving out of town, we are doing a lot of town, out-of-town medical appointments. As you know, a lot of the doctors are leaving, so we are going to Newton, Needham, Plainville, Norfolk, all over the place. And our bus driver, Ellen, also continues to be busy-taken folk shopping, local errands, programs at the center, and special day trips. We provided forty-five hundred rides to Norwood's older adults in 2023. Our Outreach Coordinator, Kathleen, is busy with fuel assistance, SNAP benefits, health insurance certifications, and mental health, parental assistance, and home care service referrals. Unfortunately, we're seeing an increase in both food and housing insecurity. Kathleen does a great job helping folks navigate all the resources and programs folks may be eligible for. And Deirdre Carney helps folks sixty and under with their fuel assistance application, and also is managing the gift of love for the town at the Senior Center. We continue to have a lot of intergenerational and community partnerships. We have had programs with the Old Tim School, the Girl Scouts, the Owen High School, the Rex Center, and the library. Our Program Director, Nancy Callagher, does a fabulous job scheduling programs, educational events, and bus trips. And the Senior Center is actually going to Ireland in the fall. It'll be our first international trip, so we already have a few people signed up, so we're really excited about that. And we just continue to serve and advocate for all the older adults of Norwood. That's a little recap.
Lot of good stuff. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
You're not retiring, right?
Oh, no.
No, I'm just kidding. I'm going to open up to the board, questions, comments for Carrie.
Great job. Sad news, I was going to bring on my agenda about Betty, Master of Data, and as close, not friends of mine, but acquaintances with my Wallpole Country Club, they were the longest-standing members of Wallpole, I think it was fifty-three years. And they were just sweet hats, and it was just a tribute, when I went to the service at St. Catherine's, how all her friends just stood in front of each aisle and for sympathy and grace. And I just want to say congratulations, and also for, I was shocked that Congressman Lynch came and spent some time with us, but it was just a sad day for Norwood. But you're doing a great job, and one thing I do, I forgot, and I mentioned, the ice cream social, that's what?
Yes, that's our Valentine Ice Cream Social, and the Bow Winder Club Band is on the twenty-third.
Noontime, right?
Um, twelve-thirty for ice cream and one o'clock for the band.
Perfect, that's my Valentine's gift to my wife, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mike.
Ms. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe if I heard you right, you mentioned housing insecurity among the seniors. Can you tell us a little bit more about that, the nature of what trends are you seeing there?
The waitlist for housing is really long, and people are struggling from wanting to get out of their home because they know they can afford it, but not really have an option to go anywhere else in Norwood. So, we have, you know, that group of folks that we deal with, and we have a lot of people where their rent is getting raised, and they just can't afford to stay where they are anymore. But there's, again, there's nowhere to go, and where are they going to get first, last, and security? So, we have, you know, we have people staying in a hotel, we have people living in their cars, we have people facing eviction. And it's not, you know, the eighty-year-olds, it's anywhere from sixty to, you know, eighty-four years old that are dealing with these crises, so.
Have you heard any chatter about unavailability of accessible places to live as people begin to face, you know, maybe they're transitioning from a home they used to live in, and now they need one level living, or they're coming up short with opportunities for that type of housing?
Yeah, I think Kathleen probably hears more of that, for sure. But, you know, there's definitely people who want to live in a more age-friendly, appropriate living situation, and not necessarily go into a assisted living yet. They want to remain with their family, or, and some of them are raising grandchildren, so they, they have that issue as well. But they want to stay in Norwood because the children are in schools. So, it is, it's certainly a crisis. I know we're not, we're not the only town dealing with it, everybody's dealing with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Like everyone else says, you do such a great job, and so, like, just.
It's a great place.
Yeah, no, so, so lucky to have you, and real, real pleasure working with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko.
Long as you keep smiling, I'm happy. All the reports are always wonderful, so thank you for the job you do up there and your staff.
Thank you, I have a great staff and great volunteers. I mean, the volunteers, we couldn't do it without the volunteers. And that, those front desk phones ring all day long, every day, so.
And a great relationship with the board and with the friends of.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's going really, really well. We have a great board. Unfortunately, we just lost Betty, but Betty's been on our board for a long time.
Yeah.
But we do have a great board, and the new friends, they're learning, they're, they're really learning. They have big shoes to fill with Phil McCoy and Air Benson and Jim Schmidt, but they're, they're very helpful and they never say no.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Donnelly?
Well, thank you, Mr. Sad, for your, your kind words about Betty, and, you know, that she's, she and Tony were just wonderful folks, and some big shoes to fill on the board with, with Betty's vacancy. But I know you'll, you'll have a, a crew of people willing to step up and serve on the board. If a person or organization is interested in donating to the Council on Aging, how would they go about doing that? Is that something?
They can just mail a check to the Norwood Senior Center, or the, either Norwood Senior Center or Norwood Council on Aging, and we have a donation account, and that donation account is what feeds the programs.
And if an individual wants to become a member, how do they go about that? What are the details about that?
Just sixty and older, it doesn't cost to come to the Senior Center. You don't have to be a resident, just, and you have to be sixty and older to use the facility. And just exercise programs have a, a small fee of two dollars. Your first exercise class, exercise class is free though, so there's no use, no reason not to try it out. We have a great fitness room, and anyone can utilize the lunch, the outreach services, the transportation. There's no brain, you can just come and see what we have.
Excellent news, because half the people at this table do qualify and the other half don't, but they will some. That's great. And so, we have the, the ice cream social coming up on the twenty-third, going. And so we have the Ice Cream Social coming up on the 23rd, going into the March timeframe.
Yeah, we have our big St. Patrick's.
That's where it's getting to.
The big St. Patrick's Day is on March 15th, Friday, March 15th.
Okay.
Dinner and the Black Velvet Band will be entertaining us.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Director, for your report.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Donnelly. Just, I will echo the comments from my colleagues and thank you for the job that you're doing. Great reputation. We love having you and hope you stay for a very long time.
I'm going to be here for a very long time.
Good. That's good to hear. We'll put that on paper and have you sign it. Mr. Mizuka, anything?
I just wanted, Carrie, can you just the number for medical rides again?
Last year it was 4,500, well, 4,500 rides. We're averaging about 300 medical rides a month.
That's incredible. In the last five years, really starting just before the pandemic, we have grown out this medical transport program. We studied it about a year ago and found out that we're, we offer the service free to seniors, but we're out of below the actual market rate of getting it. I know one statistic, last time we looked at it, we brought somebody to several dozen kidney treatments that they otherwise would have had to pay more than they can certainly afford. If you think of the cost of taking an Uber or a taxi and it can be $20, $25 one way, so somebody in a six-month period has to take 30 or 40 or 50 of those appointments, and we've been able to help them make that happen. It really is having an impact on positive health outcomes for seniors. And it's not just, one of the things we found, it's not just folks who have no other means. We have a lot of seniors who do live alone and they're not able to drive to or from an appointment and they just need some assistance getting there and back because of whatever the procedure is. So it's continued to grow and expand and it provides a, really an incredible service and it does it in a cost-effective way.
Great.
It definitely saves. I mean, one woman went to Foxborough and it cost her $100, $100 to go one way to Foxborough.
Right, if you're on a fixed income.
Right. And you know what? People are now doing their physical therapy because they have the free ride and then they can pay their co-pay. So if you had to pay to get there and the co-pay, it could just be, you know, cost-effective.
Yeah. That's great. Thank you, Mr. Mizuka. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Anything else? No?
No, the Friends Dance is Friday night. If anybody's looking for Valentine's things to do, the Friends of the Council on Aging do a monthly ballroom dance from 7:00 to 10:00, so if anyone's looking for a fun night to come and dance, come on down.
Great. All right. Thank you.
When is Krevich?
You've been telling me you're going to come.
I'm going to get there. I started playing with my grandson, so now I'm going to get better.
Mondays, yeah.
All right. Very cool.
It's a great, a big group too. We have a big group of 16 players now.
Oh, nice.
Thank you so much. Be safe in your travels home.
Okay, thank you.
Take care. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to go into new business. Item 4.1, Car Wash, Norwood High School, Fieldaki, submitting request to hold a car wash on Saturday, August 17th, 2024, from 8:30 a.m. until 1:30 p.m. at the municipal parking lot. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Ms. Grow, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item 4.2, Car Wash, Bay State Animal Cooperative submitting request to hold the annual dog wash slash car wash, rabies clinic, and microchipping clinic on Sunday, June 9th, 2024, from 9 a.m. until 2 p.m. at the municipal parking lot.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item 4.3, Guess What, It's a Car Wash, Norwood High School Softball, submitting request to hold a car wash on Saturday, May 4th, 2024, from 8 a.m. until 1 p.m. at the municipal parking lot.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Okay, I think that is it for car washes. We are moving on to item 4.4, Town Common Request Patriotic Rosary, submitting request to use the Town Common slash gazebo on July 3rd, 2024, at 1 p.m. for the recitation of the patriotic rosary. Pleasure, Board.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Ms. Grow, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor? Chair votes aye unanimous. Item 4.5, Town Common, Central Street, Request Acoustic Thursday, submitting request to use the Town Common slash Central Street for a new concert series, Acoustic Thursdays. The concerts will take place on Thursdays from May 23rd, 2024 until June 27th, 2024, from 6:30 p.m. until 8:30 p.m. with the Crossman 100 attendees expected per concert. This is working on the assumption that Central Street will be closed again. Do we have to formally vote on that before we vote on this, or?
I would approve the request and that formal request will come through the board sometime in April. Obviously, if it's not closed, we wouldn't, we would move it to the gazebo.
Okay. Ms. Plasko on this?
Yeah, question for clarification. Mr. Rosen sent this in on behalf of who? Is it the concert, Summer Fest Concert Committee?
It is in the General Manager's Office.
Is it the Cultural Council? Who is it?
Nope, it's the Concerts Committee in the General Manager's Office. We secured grant funding to experiment with a new or additional concert series for the summer.
Okay. Just being picky, but the application I think should be a little clearer. Should just, this is for, I mean, we happen to know the individual. But is he doing this his own? Was he doing it for somebody else but put his name on it? And we want, if it was somebody else, we'd want to know who that was, just so we know what we're doing. Appreciate that. Make a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
On the night?
Oh, yeah, Ms. Grow.
If we end up having another farmer's market again this year, what is the end time that we've historically seen? And will they start to overlap with each other in a bad way or not?
Correct me if I'm wrong, the farmer's market is usually on Tuesdays, right?
I think so. So I think it's probably fine. I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, it used to be Tuesdays. If they don't ask for a change.
No, it's, yeah, because we already approved that.
Even if it, even if it was, it looks like, I think the farmer's market closes at 6.
I think so too, so.
The space would be.
Yeah, I don't think so either. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. That was a motion approved made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item 4.6, Morse House Request, Norwood Democratic Town Committee submitting request to use the Morse House for a Norwood Democratic Town Committee meeting on Monday, February 26th, 2024, from 6 p.m. until 9:30 p.m. with 20 attendees expected.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item 4.7, Banner Request, DPW Economic Food Factory, submitting request to place a banner on the poles at Washington Street between Vernon and Day Streets from Monday, April 22nd, 2024, until May 13th, 2024. The banner will advertise Household Hazardous Waste slash Recycling Day and the National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive. Both events will take place on May 11th, 2024.
Motion to approve. This, a question, is it like two banners or, usually you're kind of familiar with one banner for one event.
Yeah, it's my understanding it's a banner and then there's the tape on it with other stuff, I guess.
Secondary banner?
Yeah, I'm not a marketing expert, so that's a great explanation, but a banner with both events on it.
Okay, all right.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Donnelly with Mr. Mizuka's admission that he is not a marketing expert. Seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor? Chair votes aye unanimous. Item 4.8, Sign Placement Request, League of Women Voters submitting request to take two, place six sandwich boards signs at the following locations to promote maximum citizen participation. I like that. Coakley Middle School entrance at the empty lot, Chapel and Walpole Streets intersection, Winter and Prospect Streets intersection, Walnut and Washington Streets intersection, Pleasant Street and Lennox Ave intersection, and Dean and Napounset Streets intersection. These signs will be placed two weeks prior to the election on March 5th and then two weeks prior to the town election on April 1st.
Abstaining because I'm on the steering committee for that organization.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion approved made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye with one abstention from Ms. Grow. Item 4.9, Cemetery Deeds for Signature of the Board.
Sign.
Motion to sign made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor? Chair votes aye unanimous. Item 5.10, Bad Debt List, Norwood Light and Broadband submitting bad debt list for aged cable and electric accounts that are over seven years old. Thanks, sorry, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Mizuka.
Yeah, periodically we do bring to the board our aged or uncollectible accounts for the board to approve writing off accounts that are over seven years old and are uncollectible.
Okay. Mr. Plasko?
Comment or question? We get these every year pretty routine. It's part of, part of the business. And I know they do have a process that's over these seven years doing what they can to try to collect them. But a few of them are quite big. Are we doing anything to have a policy or practice that will try to prevent that?
So the short answer is yes. Where we tend to see a loss is a business that moves in, rents a space in, call it a storefront or an office somewhere, they operate less than a year and then the business closes. And it was a small LLC and if there's sort of, as you say, you can't get blood from a stone, so there's nothing to go and get that additional account from. We've made some collection practice changes in the past to try to be as aggressive as we reasonably can, but that seems to be a particular area where we get, where we can get stiff. The business just dissolves and there's nobody to go after.
Thank you.
Anything further from the board? So this would be just a motion to file?
No, a motion to approve the bad debt list write-offs.
Okay, that has to get approval. Motion approved made by?
Mr. Plasko.
Mr. Plasko, was that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm making it now for you.
Seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor? Chair votes aye unanimous. Item 4.11, Traffic Safety Recommendations, submitting recommendations from the Traffic Safety Committee. Mr. Mizuka, you wanted to do a quick overview?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of these I want to call your attention to, particularly the two of the smaller ones. One is to allow two-hour parking to extend from Washington Street at Guile down to Hoyle Street. We had made most of the downtown two-hour parking several years ago. We have skipped, for some reason, this one small section. It's been brought to our attention that there's really no reason for it to be one-hour parking. Likely in front of the hospital in the other area was one-hour parking back when, A, the hospital was operational and B, before they had a garage. When the hospital gets operational again, that shouldn't be a problem. So for consistency's sake, we'd like to just make it two-hour parking all throughout. The second one is changing the signage on Park Place, which is formerly Ron Row Street Extension, to no parking anytime. And then finally, the one of particularly concern is posting no truck or trailer parking on both sides of the road for Carnegie Row and Vanderbilt. I think, as the board is aware, we've been having a problem with trucks for the Whole Market Foods factory. Parking on that road, blocking businesses, blocking entrances, creating quite a havoc.
It's current, two-hour parking currently, right?
The trails aren't supposed, yeah, the trails aren't supposed to be there at all. We've met with Whole Market Foods. They obviously did have a fire at their facility recently, which coincided with having this meeting. What we finally got some attention from them is we actually had the building commissioner threaten to broke their permit, issue fines based on their not following their site plan approval from the planning board. So we had to stick a little teeth into it, but quite frankly, we were tired of dealing with the issue. We had a productive meeting with them where they've come up with a plan. They're going to look at leasing some space in the area. They're rearranging a few things on their site. We told them in all uncertain terms, this is not our problem to solve. It is their problem to solve and it is their business that needs to solve the problem. They, they've seemed to have received the message. It seems to have improved and they're going to continue working on it. And the building commissioner is monitoring the situation and prepared to continue to issue fines, withhold permits, or withdraw permits as needed to make sure we get compliance with this.
Okay, Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. If the concern is the trucks for Whole Market Food, then isn't two hours too long?
Sorry, we're posting no truck, the two hours is for downtown. The trucks is no, no truck or trailer parking on that street. They're just not allowed.
That's already posted that way.
We had it posted on one of the roads and we didn't have, we didn't have Carnegie and Vanderbilt posted. We have to have it posted for the police to be able to take action. Since we wanted to make sure we got this posted so that way you couldn't park there, period. Again, it needs to be posted, even if the regulation somewhere says you can't, for it to be enforceable, you need to have a sign up. We've gone the extra step of making sure they're following their site plan, which was approved, which called for off, some onsite and some off-site staging, not off-site staging on our, on our public road. So trucks and trailers are plainly not allowed to park on Carnegie or Vanderbilt, either side.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board? Do you want us to take these individually or?
You can approve the recommendations of the Traffic Safety Commission. It's.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the recommendations?
I'll make the motion to approve the recommendations as submitted.
Motion approved as submitted, made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor? Chair votes aye unanimous. Thank you for your work on that, Traffic Safety Committee. Item 4.12, Hawes Pool Timeline Construction for Discussion. Would we like, Mr. Donnelly, you want to lead off, Mr. Mizuka?
Let Mr. Donnelly.
So, you know, just, Tony, Mr. Mizuka was going to just explain the construction timeline associated with the Hawes. I want to just say at the onset that there's been some confusion or chatter about the need to, based on our current construction project, to close the Hawes pool in order to affect the construction of the, of the pool as soon as possible. I know we've had some discussions on capital outlay and regarding a different timeline. Having been part of the pool feasibility study way back when, I think there were some conversations regarding the opportunity for the town to keep the pool open and start the construction after a pool season ended. I think since that time, my experience has shown, or at least my history has shown, that a variety of things have interfered with that particular goal, which may have been really very optimistic at the time. One is that, sure, if we had approval of that project, let's say at the May town meeting, we would have been able to certainly proceed with that. But we don't approve capital projects in May. Given that this project was approved in November with all of other projects, that, that sets our timeline quite differently. So now the opportunity is, or the, the process is that with the approval in November, you could not start the project any sooner than that. The town has organized the, the appropriate bid documents that have resulted from our, our, our design work that was done over the period of '22 and 2023. They are just out to bid recently and it is anticipated that, given the complexity of design, that this is a, Mr. Mizuka will correct me, somewhere in the vicinity of a six to eight-month timeframe. So that necessitates the pool closing, which is, which is certainly not, not great. However, the other part of, at least my experience being involved with the feasibility study as well as on capital outlay, with this particular project, when we started the feasibility, Mr. Lane and I were on the feasibility committee.
It was 2020.
2020, it's, it's long. There was a lot of optimism, both from a cost and from a timeline perspective. So I believe that the decision to close the pool is the correct one at this point in time. This project has gone from an initial estimate of, I think, under $4 million as recently as 2022. And now when we approved the project in November, it escalated to $5.7 million. So yes, there would be an opportunity perhaps for the town to say, we will hold the bid and do it later in the summer and affect a September timeframe, but I do believe that has some risks associated with it. I think there's a risk that, given the escalation of the, of this project cost, we could be looking at something north of $5.7 million that was authorized in, in November because I think cost escalation continues in this particular market. Secondly, even with a timeframe that was, you would start construction in September, six to eight months certainly seems to be reasonable in terms of a, a timeframe for a September construction start. Doesn't guarantee that we would still be looking at construction going into the spring. That could also jeopardize the 2025 plan as well, possibly. So I think the, the thing that I think I like to keep in perspective is, at the end of the day, we will have at the Hawes a major improvement to our facility there. We will be looking at, we want to do it right. So I agree, the timeline makes sense to me. You know, we are not just replacing a pool cover or a pool flooring, if you will. I mean, this is a project which is now resulting in the removal of the pool, creation of a new one. There are some major changes made to the spray park, including the system of recirculating water underneath the spray cart. These are all things that have evolved over time from a design perspective, so. Lesson learned, I think, you know, for me would be, I think that having, having seen, having this project approved in, in November having this project approved in, in November at a town meeting, you know, I think that it's, it's too bad that we didn't have more inquiry or information that on the timeline. I think that just kind of got lost in the desire to put forward a, a capital project that would lead to substantial improvement to the, to the Hawes. So it's my long-winded explanation as to the differences in the timeline and design. But I did ask Mr. Mizuka to put this on the agenda so that could be addressed. Mr. Mizuka, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
Just a couple of things. I mean, one thing that's important to remember first, we keep talking about the Hawes Pool project. And to Mr. Donnelly's point, this is a $6 million demo and construction project. It's a significant project. We're not just, you know, scraping out the bottom and re-slapping it down and patching. I mean, it's a significant construction project that in and of itself is going to take some time. The original 2021 feasibility study called for six to eight months of construction. The project has actually gotten more complicated since then. The two pre-bid, we had a pre-bid meeting just last week and the two companies that were there for the pre-bid did not feel comfortable with the six month timeline. They felt that that would be, and somehow if everything fell in perfect line, you'd be able to do that. You're more looking at the eight month. To some of the site challenges in particular, we would be doing underground piping and plumbing through the winter, which creates its own challenge. Now, this winter is just nuts, so I don't know what we can expect next year. If this continues, winter construction is no longer a, much of a concern. So you'd be trying to rush construction or do construction through the winter, which can create some problems. We don't know what we're going to find once we tear the pool up and what's under there. So all these, there's a few potential things that could happen that could delay the process even if we were to start in November. The other problem is if we start delaying and creeping up on next season, next season we have to order supply, we have to hire lifeguards and we have to be ready to go. So we start spending money, assuming the pool's going to be open at a certain point. We have a delay and we get pushed a week or two into July, it's not even worth opening the pool at that point unless we know we can get it up and running. So I think for that type of a timeline, I don't know that a September construction would, would be a good idea because you're running through the winter and you're running up on the next season if you have a problem. Whereas now, at least, let's say we have a construction problem, we've got plenty of time to come back and take care of it. We can, if the board's interested, if folks are concerned with the lack of access down south Norwood, we can run shuttles up to Father Max. The camps obviously heavily use it. Father Max does not get a lot of public use outside of the camps. So there'll certainly, depending on the schedule, be some, some flexibility there. During the pandemic, we ran just Hawes and the restrictions we had to, to keep the pool open, it was a fight. We almost closed it that summer. The rec didn't want to open it, the board health didn't want to open it. I was adamant that we get the pool open and we did. By the number of lifeguards and the people we had there, you'd have five or six people in the pool at a time. We had to close it every two hours. It was, it was nuts. So that's not ideal, but we have a major construction project on our hand. By way of comparison, the architectural work we did on this building a couple of years ago, we look at renovation, called for closing this building for two years and finding temporary office space. So with a construction project of that nature, it's not, it's not unheard of. We can try to make sure we bring timelines into the picture more for capital outlay and town meeting. As Mr. Donnelly said, it hasn't necessarily come up in the past. That being said, I don't know if the timeline would have ever factored in whether or not to do the project. The project needed to get done, we vetted it, we're replacing the 70-year-old pool. Six to eight months is a good estimate. Sure, it could be done on the earlier side of six. What if it goes to nine or 10? That's certainly a possibility.
Yeah, and to help, and to have hold it up and recommending it just because of that timeline, you miss another, you miss another period of time, cost goes up for the delay. Wouldn't have made any sense.
To the point of the capital timing, we now are able to get projects at the start of the construction season, whereas some of the challenges we faced in May, we, we used to have a longer delay in a lot of capital projects because we get an appropriation in May. Well, at that point, everyone's already locked up for the summer and fall. So you're getting the bottom of the barrel for contractors as opposed to getting them at the start of it. And evidence that that has actually worked for the town is our road bonds and our water bonds. We've been able to get the work done every year within the budget that we have appropriated, even though costs are going up, specifically because we're getting vendors at the start of the season as opposed to the, the end of the season. There's no perfect solution, but any building that needs to be down for eight months, even a season of building, you're going to run into some, some use issues.
Yeah, and I think too, Mr. Mizuka, you know, you have an idea of how long the project will take, when, when you start working with the firm, but until you get those bidders come in and say, actually, it's going to take this long, you know, it's, you don't really.
You still rely on the.
I mean, that happened with the middle school. You know, we, we had the bidders come in and some were realistic and some were saying, oh, we can do it and like, you know, and I think you want to be conservative there. Make sure it's done right. I'll open it up to the rest of the board. But I do think we should try to figure out the best way to provide transportation specifically for people that live in South Norwood, I'm thinking the kids specifically, whether it's a bus shuttle, whatever. You did mention it, but I think, you know, if, if we can put some effort into really organizing that, maybe some of the kids who would have been lifeguards, you know, can, can help with coordination, you know, we have some time.
We can definitely do that.
Yeah, and I think that would be a really good thing because, I mean, my family, we certainly use the Hawes a lot, but I just know that a lot of kids walk there. And so now asking them to walk to Father Max, it's not going to really happen. There's just, and so just, you know, and certainly I, you know, however I can be helpful, please, you know, let me know, but we definitely need to figure that out. So comments from the rest of the board, sorry. Mr. Sad.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, I think the confusion in the paper, because I wasn't involved in this, was that $500,000 grant, is that part of the equation of losing it?
No, I mean, there's always concern about whether we get grant funding and if we can conclude the grant within a cycle, in the appropriate cycle. But we decided early on, the project is going forward and we got the full appropriation for the project to go forward no matter what. Certainly, we're going to be sensitive to not wanting to lose a half a million dollars. That being said, we, we generally decide on these projects like this, that we have to do the project, we are going forward with the project no matter what. If shifting something one way or another would be a half a million dollar savings, again, to the taxpayers, we want to be sensitive to that. But the, the construction timeline, I know earlier it had been said, well, we're worried about if we can meet the grant deadline, we need to get the project done. We wouldn't delay or rush it just for the grant, I think in this case, because we knew we had to go forward with the full appropriation for the full project. The state is usually flexible on these things.
Yeah, I would think our representative could be helpful there.
Talk to John.
Yeah, that I'm not, usually you have a lot of flexibility with that as long as you have a reason. We did get a funny email from a staffer at the, the state saying they were surprised we haven't already started and finished construction. So I don't think it's somebody who does a whole lot of construction when you get an appropriation in November, thinking that the $6 million pool project would be done by early February. But yeah, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the, the grant. Worst case here, if we lose it, we have to do the project and we don't want to lose it, but we've got to do the project and.
John says he can roll it over.
Yeah.
He's going to send us an email. But the question is, I still think, because I get a lot of phone calls with South Norwood, is start in September, leave it open this year and go into next year and finish it off. I still think a contractor can do it and put that in a time.
Oh, they can absolutely, they can absolutely do that. There's two, two challenges with it. One is the cost is going to escalate and you're, you know, what's our tolerance level? Is 100 grand okay, 200 grand okay, is 300 grand okay? The other issue is if we do run into a problem and we start creeping into the next season, we have to start hiring people, ordering product and get it ready to go. So do we still end up saying, let's delay it, spend the next shot, I'm making the number up, but an extra quarter million dollars of taxpayer money to the project because we don't want to miss a season? And then we got some oil we got to remove and all of a sudden it's a, a problem with we're missing the next season. So it's about that risk versus how much you willing to spend and how much risk do you want to take? I tend to be a little bit more conservative with these things and say, I'd rather close the pool and know we're getting it done than say, yeah, I want to get one more season out of it. Again, I, the board of health wanted to kill me when I wanted to open Hawes during the pandemic, but I just, it's about what your risk tolerance is versus how much you want to gamble.
Have we gone out to bid yet?
No.
So I think if the bids come back and you put a little clause in there, can you do this in seven months, you would know.
Correct, but a bidder's not going to accept a damages clause if they don't think they can get the project done in that amount of time.
And they won't bid on it.
Right, and then if we get no bidders, we're still in a situation of we're, we're not doing it, we're not doing it, we're kicking it out and the construction costs escalate generally at 5% a year. So it's what's the risk tolerance? How, how important is it to keep it open? I guess this from a policies perspective for the board, how important is it to keep it open this summer and how much risk are you willing to take and how many more tax dollars are you willing to spend to do so? We can do whatever you want, but it, it's about balancing how much more we're willing to spend, how much risk do we take? What if we're here next year and we say, oh my God, there was contaminated soil and getting the guy in to clean it up ended up taking an extra three months that we didn't expect it, or there's a whatever, a burial ground there? I mean, those things generally don't happen, but in construction they can. And then we end up missing out next season and then we're in a situation where we said, hey, we wasted a lot of time and effort, pissed away another quarter million dollars taxpayer money and we still lost a season. But it's about the risk tolerance.
No, I know, but I think if you get the 500,000, it's rolled over to next year if the state allows it, and then you can use that as a bus for money no matter what it is, because the, the bus cost is going to be at least 25,000 minimum.
Yeah, no.
And those kids aren't going to get in a bus for an hour or two, go to the pool and come back.
Get probably some kind of.
Yeah, we, we rode a bus back while it was open for regular hours.
Yeah, no, I see what Mike's saying, you know.
It's, it's not easy. It's not, there's no, there's no perfect solution. It's just where, where do we want to take that risk and what are we willing to spend for that risk level?
What's, what's the next step?
I mean, as of right now, it's, it's, we're going to get bids in and we're going to move forward with construction. Unless the board wanted to go otherwise, we've gotten the authorization and that we move forward with projects.
Okay.
I mean, the bids could come in at $9 million.
Right.
Yeah.
Ms. Grow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to quantify the risks a little further, you know, I don't know if I want to put it as like a confidence interval or anything, but we're like, you know, I'm gut check, 80% confident or 60% confident or 90%? Like where would you put?
95% confident it will cost us more money, probably in the range of a couple hundred grand. Now, we could be wrong, bids come in high and low. Will we need to miss or impact next season? 50/50. It, it just, I don't know, 80 years ago, we built a municipal pool. Usually the way land was bought and built then is people found the cheapest, dirtiest land they could find and threw a pool in and they did great. We know the pool's leaking, there may be additional groundwork we need to do. It's right next to a pool. It, it's not as simple as building a, a single family home or a garage where I can say, okay, this is, this is pretty straightforward, there shouldn't be anything. We're, we're, we are completely reconstructing a new pool. The bathhouse is staying, the million and a half dollar bathhouse that we did about six years ago, but it's a completely new pool aquatic facility. So that's the thing, it's not just a, a dig and retrench, it's a whole new facility which adds to.
And Fan Bay knows off the top of their head, what has that land historically, over many decades or generations, had on it before it was a pool?
Farm land.
Farm land?
It's all pure sand under there.
I've heard that about every construction project in the public sector for 100 grand.
I dredge, we dredge the Hawes Pool and it's all sand.
Okay, is there anything else?
No, no questions.
Yeah, not ideal, but that's the reality. Thank you for your work there, Mr. Donnelly, appreciate it. Okay. Item 4.13, stormwater update from General Manager Tony Mizuka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Stormwater Committee has concluded their report and got it to this board. Working with Mr. Donnelly, who was on that committee, I was wondering if maybe the next step you'd want to take as a board in looking at this is at the next meeting, having the consultant who works on the stormwater rates, who's worked with the committee throughout this, come to the board and do two things. One, talk a little bit about how the rate might look, what some of the options are. I know there was interest in looking at whether there could be a split or a shift on the rate and what that would look like. I also would like to get to the board, a, a different finance plan slightly than what the committee came up with. Focus a little bit more on, not a change in really the dollar amount, but a little bit more in the capital and focus on getting some of the projects done. That's what I think the goal at the outset was, is the backlog of infrastructure work, not just shifting costs from other areas of the budget, which is good. I mean, there, there's sort of the ideal way of here's how we'd like to do it. I, I have an idea of how it might be a better approach for the board to consider to focus on getting a lot of these projects done, doing it in a financially sustainable way. And I have some thoughts on the, how to go out to borrow if we do this and how to keep the fee stable. I'd like to get that to the board in the context of if we're going to do this, what does the fee look like? What are your thoughts on that?
Just to add on to that, Mr. Mizuka, I think it also is beneficial for the consultant that the committee is working with, provide sort of, you know, for lack of a better word, sort of an education base. Well, how do fee structures work? What, what is the data that feeds into the, the rate model? How do you, how do you come up with the variation in, in fees associated with square footage of impervious surfaces? So just that very baseline understanding, the report had the information in there in terms of what the structure could look like. I think it would be beneficial for us to also just hear from the consultant in terms of what kind of detail and data goes into that particular structure. I think that's important before any decisions are made. So I think it's a good idea to have him here. I think for the 27th is.
We can, I think we can plug it in.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Plasko, you good?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Well, basically, I think that sounds pretty good.
Yeah.
As far as how to proceed, don't know how we'll go down the end of the line.
Sure.
How, how to get there.
Yeah, we're sort of getting closer to a decision point for the board and later the community and we got to start operationalizing that and look at what it would, would be.
You don't need a vote from us, though.
No, we'll, we'll work on it, get it on the agenda for probably the next meeting.
Okay, great. Item 4.14, canoe donation for acceptance by the board. Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. On the surface, it sounds like a great idea, but I wonder if we could table it and ask the manager to check with, this is involving the Conservation Commission and their thoughts on it as well as our insurance carrier. I'm getting a little concerned about liability. You know, somebody goes out in this canoe and God forbid, some disaster happens and family wants to hold us responsible.
If I could, a couple of things. We already own a canoe that is shared between rec and conservation that they use at different times for different needs. So it's already covered under our general liability policy. We would need to make sure that there's something in place for, for instance, trails committee members or cons comm members. It's not a free use public, just come and grab the canoe and go use it, but we already maintain a canoe in our inventory and it would work similar to any other equipment that we allow volunteers to use. I've checked with rec and I've checked with the conservation agent and the canoe that is being offered to us is better than the current one that we have, so they'd be excited about having it. I mean, there's no rush, it's not like we have a, have a race or something to do.
Again, I am concerned about the insurance carrier liabilities involved in this kind of activity. I technically think it should be donated to the Conservation Commission or some town agency. The trail committee is not. It's a advisory committee to the manager. They can use it, they can work in cooperation, but as far as having an identified responsible party, I think it should be a standing committee.
Yeah, I recommend the rec department. They, again, they maintain a canoe as it is now and they have the best, it would be able to store it appropriately and they would probably use it the most in conjunction with what they already have. And they're a staff department, conservation's a department of, of one, with no vehicles, no equipment.
And they're doing a fishing derby, a fish and learn to fish in May, I think. It's right up the rally, they could use that fishing on New Haven.
So you're saying a recreation department?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Plasko.
Subject two, approval by the donator to the terms. We make a motion that we accept the donation under chapter 44, 53A and a half, because it's the end of item and not cash, and that'd be under the auspices of the Recreation Department.
Okay, motion to accept the donation of everything Mr. Plasko's.
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Sad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes are unanimous, great.
And just a note of thanks to the person who donated it as well, from Mr. Babel, for his recognition for his donation of the canoe to the REC.
Much thanks.
Absolutely.
Great. Item 4.15, senior tax work-off program. Program changes for approval of the board. Mr. Mazuko, you provided us with a memo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The governor has successfully gotten a law through the legislature that increases the maximum eligible property tax abatement under our senior tax work-off program from $1,500 to $2,000. With this board's blessing, we would like to increase our program to that level, because the board knows we use seniors in a, senior workers in a lot of different departments in town. We use many here as greeters at Town Hall. We have a number of wonderful stories of seniors coming to work for us under this program, and then us actually hiring them into part-time positions throughout the town that they do in addition to the senior tax work-off program, and they've been a valuable asset as employees and as senior tax work-off, senior tax work-off workers. So we, we recommend you approve it so we can continue to provide this level of relief to seniors in the community who qualify for it.
Great, we have a motion to approve the manager's recommendation to increase the maximum threshold for property tax reduction effective immediately from $1,500 to $2,000 per program year.
No question of proof.
Motion approved, seconded by Mr. Sad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes are unanimous, thank you, Mr. Mazuko. Item 4.16, town meeting warrant for signature of the board. What's the best way to do this, Mr. Plasko?
Well, there's been no change since what we saw previously, right?
Well, there's a change in the wording for the kennel that was sent in today, but the same subject's the same.
Correct, a minor change, so the board just needs to vote to sign the warrant, and you can decide if you want it at your next meeting, yellow sheet positions, you can do it now if you want, that's, that's up to you. Yellow sheet hasn't changed.
Positions don't have to be the same as the warrant itself.
So, I'm sorry, say that again?
The yellow sheet positions is not the same as approving the warrant.
Correct, honestly, approving the warrant at this point is somewhat perfunctory. The planning boards have their hearings, they are recommending zoning changes.
I know if you want to take the time tonight to go over positions, so maybe we could hold that till next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's good.
I was going to recommend, I think, just because of, you know, the public hearing for the planning board, it was last night, there were some of us there, you know, gather our thoughts. Is that okay with you, Mr. Plasko?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, tonight's just approving the warrant, which is.
We could have taken positions.
Make a motion to approve the warrant submitted, along with the updated kennel article submitted today by Sarah Dixon, the town planner, or whatever. She has a different title, doesn't she?
Director of the meeting.
Excuse me.
That's right, I eliminated the Conservation Agent position four or five years ago, and I still call it the Conservation Agent, not the environmental planner, but we'll all get there.
Mr. Plasko's motion, I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes are unanimous. Good. So Christine, for next meeting, will, yellow sheet positions, we'll, we'll go there. Great, okay. That brings us to memoranda.
Some manager.
Yes.
I wonder if I can comment on two of them briefly. One, 5.1 Verizon. I wonder if we could ask Ms. Woodward to be kind enough to notify Verizon that Michael LaHaine hasn't been our council for some number of years.
Quite a few.
We could update their records. It is still the same firm, but he is not the attorney of record, and we should get that clarified, just to get technical. And the other one is, I wonder if you might read 5.5, the town clerk's notice about the voting?
Great, yeah, thank you. I'll certainly read that. Sure. This is a memo dated for today from our town clerk, Mary Lou Folen. This letter is being written in reference to the early voting process that will be held in the town of Norwood for the upcoming presidential primary election. We've been notified by the Secretary of State's office that there will be a one-week early voting period for the upcoming March 5, 2024 presidential primary election. Early voting will begin on Saturday, February 24, 2024, and will end on Friday, March 1, 2024. The early voting will take place in Memorial Hall, first floor at Town Hall. The hours are as follows: Saturday, February 24, 2024, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This is also the last date to register to vote for the presidential primary election. Monday, February 26 to Thursday, February 29, 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., and then on Friday, March 1, 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact the town clerk's office at 781-762-1240, extension 6026, or email clerk@norwoodma.gov.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sending it was probably for that purpose, so we want to get that done.
Excellent.
Unless those other comments make motion to file 5-1 through 5-8?
Motion to file 5-1 through five other number that you said. And also, much thanks to Mary Lou Folen and her staff.
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager on 5.7 DOT, and I don't know who controls Big Y, that runoff where people cut across in front of you, almost killed me the other day. Maybe we can do is send somebody, somebody who owns that road and say, why are we doing this?
Which?
The Big Y, we're heading into the high school, it's got that two.
Oh, you said Big Y, I think of the grocery store. That's the same thing. Up front of the high school?
No, in front of Big Y.
Okay.
You've got, you've got the road going this way, there's not a lane that comes around in front of Big Y that goes, that cut in front of you.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
On the motion?
On the motion? So, Mr. Plasko, was it 5.1 up to 5.?
Eight or nine?
Nine.
Nine, okay. May I just make one observation about 5.8, just for the board's, just FYI? So we do have requests coming in from, as the note indicates, for some work, a request to go on the capital outlay for St. Gabriel's Chapel due to some window issues. And it wasn't on the, on the projected projects that was submitted to the selectmen earlier this year, so I'm going to suggest that Mr. Mazuko and Mr. Ryan just be prepared to update both the board and the capital outlay as to their sense of that project's needs and how it fits into the FY25 capital plan.
Sure, Mr. Mazuko will be happy to do that.
I would love to, and I will even save it for another day rather than.
I'm not talking about tonight.
Going to the discussion.
I know maybe an opportunity, Mr. Ryan is before us, it's, we can hold it for there for certain, but thank you.
Okay. Motion to file made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes are unanimous, great. Mr. Mazuko, manager's update.
Thank you, Chairman. Just one item sort of informally from the board to consider. We continue to post selectmen's meetings as hybrid meetings, as we've done since the time of the pandemic. One of the reasons we wanted to continue doing it was to just make sure we maintained the habit and the capacity, because last year, the bill regarding remote meeting access that was making its way through the legislature would have required meetings to be also available online. It appears now, at least the iteration for this year, is buried, not buried, but included in the municipal modernization bill, or they're calling it the Municipal Empowerment Act, that would make permanent the ability to have remote meetings and hybrid meetings, but does not make it required. Is the board interested in continuing to post them as hybrid meetings? We, not that it's an, not that it's an inordinate amount of time or energy, but it never, we very rarely, I shouldn't say never, actually have anyone joining. We are so fortunate here that Norwood Community Media streams our meetings live on NCM. Most towns don't have access to that. I think earlier I was mentioning to somebody, the last time I worked in and granted that this point, this was seven or eight years ago, if you missed a meeting live, it was two or three weeks before you could see it. So we haven't seen that online access or need that other communities did, because it's already there through online. If we don't post them as hybrid meetings, you can still bring in a consultant or a reporter or something online, you don't need to post it as a hybrid meeting to have an attorney here or something like that. I just, we may do it with a few other boards, just curious what the board's thoughts are.
I know Ms. Plasko has thoughts.
You know, my thought, that we don't do it any longer, that we go strictly to in-person. We've had, well, we have had people join us in the past. It's been painful trying to get through and hear them and them hear us and try to conduct the meeting, and for all the other reasons you just mentioned, I don't see that there's a real particular need, and if there's any extra work at all, I don't see that it's worth doing. I much prefer the face-to-face, if that's what we can get away with, so I would say end it. If there's a particular time, we can foresee that it would be helpful, we can always vote it, because it's, the town isn't making one decision right here.
Correct.
You have the flexibility, but I think on a week-to-week basis, I'd like to just drop it and go in-person.
Ms. Grow, what do you think?
I think it either way, there are plenty of times where being able to tap in remote is useful for me, since I have an on-call job. But I've gotten lucky, and it hasn't hit me too often this past couple of years. The option to be able to continue to do it when we need to, like, you know, like we say, as long as, as long as it's not binary and it's, we can never do it or we must always do it. If there's the option, you know, if the chair is like, you know what, this time I want to post it, you know, as an option, then I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah, we always retain the option, it's just more administratively, we go through the process, we make sure the link's on there, post the agenda's our way. We always can do it, and members can still access it remotely. We have our own remote policy, you just let the chair know, and you just let us know, we could always set that up. It's more the, if we don't, like, tonight, we didn't have a presentation, we, you know, we make sure we get the TV setup, we turn it on, we get the laptop set up. It's just a little bit of extra work, we're not seeing a benefit from, I guess.
Yeah. Mr. Sad, what do you think?
100%, as I mentioned to Tony a couple weeks ago, month ago, I'd like to see more town officials up here, plumb heads. It's always good to put a face to it, and maybe, I've got a lot of calls, and I'm not sure if you get them all, with the seniors that can't hear this remote and stuff that on NCM does a great job, but they even asked me if they could bring it up with closed captions, how they have the wording. So Ronnie, if you could look into that, that'd be great with Jack, so, no, I agree with Bill. Get him out of the pajamas and get him up here.
Okay. Mr. Donnelly, what do you think?
You know, I think it's fine if we maintain the option with notice for, if there's a reason for one of us that we know in advance that it's going to be very difficult for us to attend the meeting, but we have with notice an opportunity to participate remotely on occasion, I think that's fine. I'm just wondering now, will this, would this not, would not restrict our ability to, if we have a consultant, aid and attorney, that we need to have present who is unable to come here, to still have them available to us by video link?
Absolutely, we don't lose that ability. That's, when we're posting a hybrid meeting, what you're doing is providing an additional access point for the public. So bringing in a consultant, if we have somebody that's working on a project and they live in Texas and they only got to talk 20 minutes, we can do that, we don't need to post the meeting as a hybrid meeting, because it's not a hybrid meeting at that point, it's no different than a phone call, which is allowed with a, with a consultant. So we can still continue to do that the couple times a quarter that it might happen. And again, worst-case scenario, we just post it as a hybrid meeting.
Might be different, I think, Mr. Mazuko, if it was a public hearing.
Correct.
And we were having the consultant stay home or in his office.
Correct, we, well, the board can still hear the public, but that's just a meeting, and we're not talking about public hearings, but you're right, we wouldn't do a public hearing that way, but an engineer needs to come in and give us an update on a project. We had one a couple of years ago, I think it was an engineer in Barnstable, and it was, we knew it was a 20-minute placement of a wire or something, we said, no, that's where it's, that's where it worked for us. Again, the, the large crowd of zero we have online right now has been the norm for us. Each board is free to do what they see fit, some of the land use boards have seen a little bit more activity, but some of the other boards just have not.
What does this mean for Jeff?
He likes coming in and seeing us, so he's going to have to continue to come in and see us.
If he doesn't, he's going to watch it on TV anyhow, no.
Well, yeah, he, yeah, he can watch.
He's got a big screen TV, he's got a little computer, come on.
Yeah. And again, if NCM didn't do the great job they did broadcasting via the internet, I think I'd want us to have another, an alternate means to be able to get out there, but they do, so we're sort of replicating it.
It's really easy.
And that was going to be my observation, is that while the public can watch us on the live stream, in terms of the public using the remote option to comment, I do not have recollection, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that we've had anybody really engage that. Even the call, the folks that we have had on the call have sort of just quietly just been on the call.
I think in three years, every comment we've gotten is that they can't hear us or we can't hear them, so it hasn't proven to be a tool for us. Some communities went to remote meetings, as you know, during the pandemic, and they just have not stopped, but it.
Okay. Do you want to vote on that?
I think I have the sentiment of the board, we'll, we'll change it when we start setting the agenda.
All right. Any other updates from you?
I know, that's.
No, thank you. Okay, selectmen's addenda, Mr. Sad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate the Norwood High Wrestling Team. I got a shout-out to the coach and the wondrous team, because they're going to the state championships this weekend, and good luck to them. And the hockey team for winning the Burns Memorial Tournament this weekend. Congratulations to the coaches and their entire team, because it's a big win and first time ever, I think, for Norwood, so congratulations to them and all the other teams, and finish strong, and have a great season. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sad, Ms. Grow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to send out kudos. I know I forwarded some to the manager already, but I've noticed an uptick to what, to me is a positive thing of, you know, as I'm around the town, residents coming up to tell me that they're very impressed by the Community Development Department, that they feel like they've been doing a good job of explaining things, or even if they don't agree with what they're saying, that they understand the points that are being made or the data that's being brought forward. It's not a topic that usually residents come to, to get excited about with me, so I thought it was a little noteworthy, and I just wanted to, to send on compliments to that department, because they're, they're really engaging with the community, and I think they're doing, seeing the evidence of residents coming to me to talk about it, when I normally, I don't hear chatter about that topic.
Always like to have positive.
Yeah.
That's great.
And that's it for me tonight.
Great. Ms. Plasko.
Pass, please.
Pass. Okay. Mr. Donnelly.
Just two things, Mr. Chair, thank you. So this coming Sunday, 2 o'clock, it's the final winter concert series, program, rather, at the Norwood High School, 2:00 p.m., and playing till 4:00 p.m., and this will close out the season with the SOS Big Band. So it's a great event, always free, it's very comfortable, the auditorium, the Paul Alberta Performing Arts Center is a wonderful place for music, and getting tons of compliments from the musicians who have played there, in terms of the quality of the stage, quality of the sound, acoustics in there, and everybody's having a great time. We have one more shot at it, it's the 18th, and then we're on to planning for the summer season, which is not too far away. One other thing I just thought for the board's consideration, I'm probably going to spoil any surprise that could be associated with this, but with Chief Brooks' pending retirement, and given the, his tenure and what he has dedicated and accomplished in Norwood, I'm just wondering if we would be interested in asking our state representative, our state delegation representative, Ms. Grow, to speak with the delegation in regards to the process for perhaps getting some form of appropriate recognition for Chief Brooks for his many years of service to Norwood, but also his contribution to law enforcement, which extends well beyond Norwood.